All right, I'm gonna call to order the Monday, June 14, 2021 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to order. We're gonna start with a quick roll call. Mayor Mike Fournier here, calling in from Royal Oak, Michigan. Commissioner Douglas?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Colo?
Do you hear me? Okay, I am here in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Mr. Prush?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Hunt?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Dubac?
I'm here in Royal Oak.
And Commissioner Macy?
Here in Royal Oak.
All right, there's been a request to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Start with Commissioner Prush.
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we'll head into closed session. Ms. Wanger, just let us know when we're in closed session. Thank you. All right, well, it's 7:30, and I think we got most of the crew here, so I'm gonna resume the public meeting. We're just gonna do another quick roll call for those who are tuning in tonight at 7:30. Mayor Mike Fournier here, zooming in from Royal Oak, Michigan. Commissioner Dubac?
I'm here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Prush?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Hunt?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Colo?
I'm here in Royal Oak.
Commissioner Macy?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Douglas?
Here in Royal Oak.
All right. We got everyone. So, we're gonna begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. Today, June 14th, is Flag Day. The Stars and Stripes was designated the official national symbol of the United States of America by the Continental Congress on June 14, 1777. In 1912, an executive order by President Taft established the proportions of the stripes and the arrangement of the stars on the field. In 1916, President Woodrow Wilson declared June 14th as National Flag Day, and he also established the Star Spangled Banner as our national anthem. In 1949, President Truman signed an Act of Congress recognizing the holiday of Flag Day and encouraging Americans to celebrate it. And in fact, there have been 27 versions of the flag, changing as states were admitted to the Union. But the flag isn't a thing, it's an idea. It means something to all of us, and it means something to each of us. And I like the words, and I'll close with the words of abolitionist and suffrage advocate Henry Ward Beecher, who said in 1861, "Our flag carries American ideas, American history, and American feelings. It is not a painted rag, it is a whole national history. It is the Constitution, it is the government, it is the emblem of sovereignty of the people, it is a nation." Amen.
All right, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Douglas. All right, that brings us to item number eight on the agenda. Do I see our library director is here, Adrienne Resnaud. If you can hand it over to you for an update on the wonderful things that are occurring at Royal Oak's Public Library.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time this evening, so I can provide a brief update about the library. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Adrienne Resnaud, and I've been the interim director of the library since mid-February, when our previous director left to take a new position. Since we last spoke, I'm pleased to report the library has moved into Phase Four of our reopening, which is grab-and-go. Patrons may now come into the library to browse and check out materials, as well as use computers for up to one hour. Our first day in Phase Four was on May 19th, and that day, we welcomed 398 patrons into the building, while still completing 62 contactless pickups, for a total of 460 visits that day. Since our previous maximum was 80 patrons due to our contactless pickup limits, this is a 475% increase, which is amazing. After our reopening, after our reopening day, we're able to welcome a total of 4,407 patrons through our doors in May, and these first two weeks in June, we've already seen 3,310 patrons. On Saturday, June 19th, we are looking forward to kicking off our 2021 summer reading program with a party at the Star JC Park from 10:00 a.m. till noon. This year's theme is Tales and Tales, which is all about animals, so it'll be featuring the Bowers School Farm and their farm animals. We're also expecting that the Great Lakes Live Steamers will run train rides, and these are just two of the many exciting things that are going to happen this Saturday, so stop on by. Our summer reading program is for all ages, and for more information, you can visit us at ropl.org or come into the library. For more outdoor summer fun, the here-on-Clinton Metro Parks are now on the Michigan Activity Pass lineup, which is awesome. You can grab your library card and print a free day pass at michiganactivitypass.info. Other than preparing for our busy summer season, we're wrapping up the end of the fiscal year, planning the next phases of our reopening, and interviewing for the library director position. We wrapped up the first phase of our renovation, and we're looking forward to reassessing our needs, both internally and externally, to determine how to best move forward. We did receive a $15,000 community energy management grant to help with our LED lighting project, so the next step for that is putting out our request for proposals. We launched our first Makerspace program, which is an easy sewing class on YouTube, and we plan to do many more programs with the items that we were able to purchase with the $10,000 matching grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. Thank you again for your time, and I'm happy to hear any feedback or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Resnaud. Any questions? What was Resnaud? Just thank you for, oh, Commissioner Colo has a question. Commissioner Colo?
So, before the mayor tells you all these amazing good things, I just want to also thank you. I mean, it was so exciting being back in the library that day, and man, I was one of those 394 people with my two kids, so it was just great to see it. Y'all did a great job with that renovation, the downstairs is looking amazing. And the library thinks it's just expanded so much. There are so many different things you can get from the library right now. We made waffles that look like Baby Yoda, that's a long ago. I mean, there's so many cool things that you could check out. So, thank you to you, the team, the library board, and everyone. It's really, the library's coming back, we're reopening. I mean, this is the summer of Royal Oak, and you're a critical part of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just on behalf of the commission here, to everyone at the library, you guys have done a tremendous job, not just enduring the last 18 months or so, but actually finding ways to thrive and really be a shining light in our community, and an example for not just other departments in the city, but for everybody, more broadly speaking. So, we're very grateful for all the work you do. We're excited about all the things you mentioned, the summer reading program, the library getting back to normal, hopefully here shortly. Renovations, I can't wait to come down there and see them. I didn't have a chance this weekend, and I think, you know, I feel for a lot of families and a lot of people in this community. You know, the library will kind of be that bridge and that helpful catalyst to make us feel like we're getting back to where we used to be in a much cooler, brand-new way. So, thank you for everything, and we really appreciate it, and thank you for making time tonight to bring us up to speed on all the hard work you guys are doing.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Resnaud. Okay, that brings us to item nine. We're also very lucky tonight to have with us State Representative Jim Ellison to provide us a legislative update. Representative Ellison, the floor is yours. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Fournier, and all the commissioners, Mr. Brake and Mr. Leo. Happy to be here to give you an update of what, at least what we're trying to do in Lansing. I think if we have our stick-to-itness, we'll get some of this stuff done. But I think you're all aware that as of June 1st, many of the restrictions were lifted from by Department of Health and Human, excuse me, easy for you to say, Health and Human Services. And as we approach July 1st, now we're gonna find almost the bulk of the remaining restrictions. All indoor capacity restrictions will be lifted. The non-vaccinated indoor mask requirement will be lifted, however, businesses still have the option, if they want to have a mask in their businesses, they can do that, and that is enforceable. And then all the other broad economic, I'm sorry, all the broad epidemic orders will be lifted, and include social distancing and all the other things that have been. So, we will be back in a state of normalness, still to be defined what normal is. And just as a reminder, if any of our folks out there are still having trouble with unemployment insurance, my staff is still ready to help as best we can. Sometimes a call from a state rep's office into the UIA will get a little bit faster results, so feel free to contact my office. Email by Jim Ellison, one word, at house.mi.gov, or you can call my office at The Secretary of State Secretary of State has been trying to catch up on the, behind the eight ball that they are. He has recently announced a number of new appointments that can be made, 350,000 appointments that'll be scheduled up through September. They're doing that to help undo the backlog that, we've got a tremendous backlog because your offices were all closed during the pandemic, and it's gonna be a while to catch up, so that's what they're attempting to do with, you know, the appointment, and they are gonna work on and re-instituting a walk-in program as well. A lot of people insisting that we have a walk-in program. The hard work we're doing right now is the budget. We are in the final stage of the budget negotiations. Technically, we are supposed to be done by July 1st. I'm not sure if that's gonna happen. I just anticipate we're gonna have a lot of long days, which is okay, it goes with the territory. But I do know that the Senate has dropped a bill trying to extend that date, so we may not have a budget totally by July 1st, but it'll be shortly thereafter. The bulk of the hard deliberations we're having right now is the disbursement of the COVID-19 funds. The actual 2122 budget seems to be in good shape. Our revenue projections are much higher than what we had anticipated them to be, and so the budget process of the running, the business of running the state turned out to be much, much easier than we thought. We do now have a sense of cooperation. We've got the majority party working with the governor to try to get us to a solution. We've got the standard process. The governor submitted her budget, the House submitted their budget, the Senate submitted their budget, and nobody liked any of them. So, we are now in conference committee, which means we have individuals from both the House, the Senate, and the governor's office negotiating to find points in the budget, so that's the final step of the process, and we are hoping it'll still be done by, by the end of the month. I think I've told you all before that we do have an Oakland County Democratic Caucus that we formed. It's, again, a specific Democratic Caucus for Oakland County legislators to try to push needs for our Oakland County residents. We have submitted a list of seven budget priorities that we'd like to work into the budget. We've got them to the budget committees. They consist of additional education funding, some money for bridge building, taking care of some pollution in the waterways, replacement of lead and copper pipes, additional childcare, adult education, and expansion of the Going Pro program. So, if we're lucky, we'll get a lot of those into the budget, and we can see some benefits for the county. And finally, in my personal legislation and the goals I've been doing, I recently was part of an aid bill package that dealt with elder abuse. My particular bill, 4377, deals with the penalties for lost my mind, just don't get, deals with the penalties for, or financially taking advantage of an elderly person, so. But it's a large package. We've got, it's a bipartisan package, so we expect a lot of support on it. The House Local Government Committee took testament last week on one of my bills that I've instituted, which should help local government in a smaller sense. There's always been a problem with how we collect personal property tax on heavy equipment rental. The contractors use that they rent from equipment rental stores. In the old process, in order to get an accurate assessment of the value of the equipment for personal property tax reasons, tax day was December 31st of every year, and so the assessors would have to go out and try to find these pieces of equipment, assign dollars amount to them, and just, it opened itself up to the ability to con the system by taking your equipment out of state or whatever you needed to do. So, what my bill does is eliminates that program, and it adds a 2% excise tax that is charged on the equipment at the time of rental, and then that excise tax goes back to the local governments. It's a fair distribution of the funds. And finally, the last bill that I did was kind of a very honored to do it. It's kind of an interesting bill. I was able to get my colleagues to to support me in getting a section of I-75 from 12 Mile to 14 Mile dedicated in the name of Captain Jeff Rosich from the Madison Heights Fire Department. Captain Rosich died while on duty a month or so ago, and I thought it was fitting to have the highway that goes through Madison Heights named in his honor, and his wife, Lizzie, came up to Lansing, gave a very emotional, passionate speech, and had my colleagues on the committee in tears, and so we got it unanimously passed through the House. It now goes further, the Senate anticipating no problems there, and then the governor should sign it. Then we'll have the highway named after Captain Rosich. Just a reminder again, that I think I've told a lot of you, my primary purpose of being up in Lansing is municipal finance, and I continue to work on it, along with colleagues. We're getting more and more, more and more people joining me, of trying to fix the way we collect our revenue for local governments, and in particular, the one I'm looking at is a modification to the Hadley Amendment, which really just takes it back to the way it was originally passed. Unfortunately, during the passage of Proposal A, the roll-up provision of Hadley, which was always part of the, part of the agreement, disappeared. And so, all I'm trying to do is get it reinstated. It's gathering some stories. It's not gonna raise anybody's taxes, it's just gonna give municipality the ability to roll up their taxes to try to get themselves back to level ground again after severe economic slump, so that'll be something that will, will help our municipal governments and we go forth from there. And that's officially all I got. Anybody have any questions?
Questions for Representative Ellison?
Come on, I'm not that good.
No, I think you're pretty thorough. Oh, Commissioner Dubac has a question.
Just curious, Representative, you know, there's been a lot of reports about a package of terrible voter suppression bills moving through the legislature. I'm just wondering if you have any view to the likelihood of their passage, or anything you can share with us on those?
They have not made their way down the hall to the House floor yet. We haven't seen them. There hasn't been much discussion about them. There is a lot of pushback, obviously, from our side of the aisle, but also there's Republican pushback on these bills as well. So, we're watching them closely. We are going into recess here in about two and a half weeks, and they don't happen by, by summer, by the end of, end of July or so. Then we can expect any action, if any, is gonna happen in the fall, so we'll keep our eye on them.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Representative, kind of following up on Richard Dubac's question there, there's another set of bills about local preemption and taking control away from municipalities dealing with short-term rentals. Do you know what I think?
Yeah, let's talk about that one. Yeah, you know, it's probably one of the most discussed topics right now, and it's just, it's a horrendous couple bills. They're really terrible, because it basically just yanks away all local control from municipalities, so they can't enforce zoning ordinances. And it's just a terrible bill, and I've gone on record many times saying I would never support anything like that, that diminishes the ability of local governments to control their own zoning ordinance. That being said, there is, there is a package of two new bills that come out that do address that, and put more control back to the local governments, and still trying to appease the bed and breakfast, or the, what do you call these, these temporary rental folks. So, that bill has not been presented yet. I think we're gonna get a hearing on it here within a week or so, and we'll see where it goes, but I think the other two bills are dead in the water.
Thank you. Appreciate that update.
Anybody else? All right, Representative Ellison, we appreciate your hard work and what you're doing on behalf of the constituents here in Royal Oak. We know it isn't easy being up there, especially with such a divisive legislature, but we know you're fighting the battle and imparting your municipal experience at every opportunity, and hopefully, you know, greater minds and greater decisions prevail. So, we're grateful for the work you're doing, and appreciate you taking the time tonight to talk to us and bring us up to speed on what's going on in Lansing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I couldn't do without supporting people like you that give me their ideas, give me their needs, tell me what I need to fix up there, and set me on a path of doing good. So, I thank you for all your input, and I know we have a lot of discussions. I talked to all of you, most of you many times. Ms. Hunt, you and I need a coffee together, so we'll get there. But as far as rest of you, we have good dialogue, and I do the best I can for you guys, and I hope I'm making you happy. So, that being said, thank you. Thank you, and we'll see if our next regular scheduled journey into your commission meeting, so.
Thank you, Representative Ellison. Take care. Okay, this brings us to item 10 on tonight's agenda, approval of the agenda. Commissioner Colo?
I move approval of the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush? Okay, discussion on the approval of the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we have an established agenda. This brings us to item 11, which is public comment. Ms. Wanger?
Mayor Fournier, members of the City Commission, this meeting, we had 11 public comments called in, and one that was emailed in. And I'll start by reading the one into the record that was emailed in. Says, "Hello, I am writing to weigh in on the appeal mentioned above, which is Tiffany's Training at 219 East 12 Mile Road. Tiffany's Training and the use of the outdoor area behind the building she inhabits is extremely disruptive to those of us that live in the community directly behind it. Her classes include very loud music, yelling, and are held during the early morning hours. She does not appear to care that she is disruptive, and despite many complaints, she has not modified her behavior nor attempted to come to a compromise with the community. My husband works late hours and does not appreciate being awoken early in the morning by thumping music and yelling. I work from home and often have virtual meetings that I lead, and cannot have the music and yelling in the background, which I can even hear through closed windows. In addition, there is no reason why she cannot hold these classes inside and require the use of masks. This is something that other fitness studios in the area do. For the reasons above, we respectfully request the revocation of Tiffany's Training COVID-19 Temporary Use Permit be upheld. Best regards, Carrie and Timothy Rollison." And now I will play the called-in comments for you.
Hello, my name is Rudolph Wade. I'm a Vietnam veteran, calling response to removing the monument. The monuments should be left alone, and should stay in place where it is, work around it, and thank you. Hello, my name is Rudolph Wade.
This is Angela Top. I'm calling about Tiffany's Training. This has been a struggle over two-year period with this owner prior to COVID. This business is approximately 30 yards from my back door. This owner behaves with wanton disregard for the harmony of the residents of the Amfley Park. The loud noise from the booming box radio, dropping of weights, tires, and other equipment, yelling commands. When asked to turn them down, owners only increase the volume. Please protect us from this owner and maintain the revocation of the permit. Thank you.
My name is Scott Lipinski, and my family lives along Rosedale Avenue. We are requesting that you reconsider the sidewalk installation mandate for Rosedale Avenue between Hawthorne Avenue and Farnham Avenue. Our house was built in 1917, during which time sidewalks for Rosedale Avenue were not required. Our home is continually lawfully been used as a single-family home since construction. As a result, our home would be classified as illegal, non-conforming, and may continue to be used as such. The City Engineering Department has estimated a special assessment of $7,553.40 for our family for the sidewalk installation. This is a significant hardship for us, one that we can't afford. Additionally, our driveway for our garage is located on Rosedale Avenue. Our property, inclusive of the garage, is elevated from Rosedale Avenue. Consequently, our garage driveway has a significant pitch. If the sidewalk is installed, our driveway would need to be replaced in order to maintain vehicular access to the garage. Again, additional costs that we would have to bear. Moreover, the timing of this mandate is poor, given the current state of residential construction, trade industry. We've reached out to several contractors, and we've been informed that it would be a significant delay before we would be able to install the sidewalks on our own, which means that effectively, we can't install them even if we wanted to. Having a tree canopy on our property is something that we value. It's one of the main reasons why we chose to reside in our house. We're concerned that the effect of constructing a sidewalk will have on six mature trees that we have on our property that front Rosedale Avenue. Like our garage, the trees are located above the right-of-way behind retaining structure. Tree roots are located near the surface where the sidewalk would be installed. There's no way around it. A significant portion of these tree roots would be removed and destroyed by installation of that sidewalk. There's been minimal change since the last sidewalk developed for this area. There's been one, and only one home on the street that installed sidewalks during, due to a complete home renovation and requirement by the city. We feel that there's significant difference between wanting property owners and maintaining improvements to the property in actual public need. As indicated by the City Engineering Department, there's access to sidewalks for the entire length of Rosedale Avenue. Pedestrians are easily able to navigate Rosedale Avenue. We know this. We walk this daily. Traffic volumes are minimum, and we've never noticed any issues concerning traffic speed. There are three stop sites over this three-block stretch of Rosedale. There is not a compelling need for a sidewalk here, especially at the extreme cost to our family. We implore you to reconsider these points and provide an exemption for our home. Frankly, we cannot afford to shell out $12,000, inclusive of replacing the driveway for our property. We're still recovering from the pandemic. Thank you very much for your time. Bye.
To Fabian 316 Midland, longtime resident of Royal Oak. With regard to item number 15, I think that it is despicable that council were trying to end around on the people's right to put a ballot initiative on the ballot by trying to bury efforts of a ballot initiative into Michigan state law. You are gutting the city charter. You have gutted the city's master plan. You have violated a city ordinance with the failure to recognize the veterans' memorial monument and the right of the people to vote on that. You are violating city charter by refusing to vote on valid You are violating city charter by refusing to vote on valid petitions that were presented on that issue. And it seems as though you will do just anything that you darn well please. Uh, I will do everything in my power to unseat you. That's my comment.
Hi, yes, I, my name is Sarah Miller. I'm at 233 Forest Avenue, Royal Oak. I'm calling about the sidewalks that are supposed to go in on Rosedale in Royal Oak. Um, I got the notice, I never got the first notice. I got the second notice telling me that I need to tear up my, basically my property in order to have this done. First of all, there is absolutely no reason to have a sidewalk on my side of the street. The people can walk across the street. The only people that are really cutting through are basically people that are coming down from Hawthorne. That is not a high-traffic area. And there's a full sidewalk across the street. There is no reason to tear up other people's property in order to put another sidewalk in. Second of all, it's not, it's going to be a safety issue. Our houses are all built on an elevation. My driveway is elevated. I have a heated driveway because it's a risk because of the elevation of the house already. There is no possible logistical way to put a sidewalk and make it smooth and accessible for people and safe. Or if I did that, I'd have to tear apart my entire driveway and lower my garage, which is you are not allowed to do. Second of all, I have full mature pear trees that would have to be ripped out, or I was told they don't have to be ripped out now, but they're going to put a sidewalk around it. First of all, no room. Second of all, it would tear up the entire, the sidewalk would have to be repaired in a couple of years because there's roots to the trees. The reason we live in Royal Oak, yes, it's a great walkable community, but we already have sidewalks, but we also are there for the trees. We don't need to rip up stuff in order to put something in that is absolutely unnecessary. Third of all, when I built my house in 2007 and eight, we went to the city and we were told, and we fought to not have a sidewalk there, and we were told we did not have to put a sidewalk in. Therefore, I have a heated driveway that now has heated pavers and coils that I would have to tear out in order to put the sidewalk in. That is absolutely ridiculous. There is, again, no logistical reason to put a sidewalk on this side of the street when people can walk across the street just fine. Um, and I feel like this is just a game because the first notice, I don't even think it properly went out to anybody. Second of all, you're going to make me pay for a sidewalk? Does it something the city should be paying for? I, absolutely not. And then probably have to pay another 10 grand just to do landscaping and remove things, garden walls, sprinkler systems, pavers, and good luck. Who am I supposed to find right now to do work? Have you guys tried to hire people to do work? This is absolutely, absolutely ridiculous. And if I need to take it to the next step and hire an attorney, that is what I'm going to do. Have a great day.
Hi, this is Michael Belik, resident of 232 Hawthorne in Royal Oak. I received some paperwork about, uh, an assessment for, uh, sidewalk with a huge bill that's coming to us. Uh, I'm actually calling to opt out of that. We're not interested in getting the sidewalk there or paying for it. Uh, it would probably require a tree removal, which my wife loves the tree that's there right now. Uh, also can't really afford around $8,000 right now, nor do I want to take a 6% uh, uh, loan for this. Uh, please just, uh, hear our voices, I mean, all of our neighbors. Also feel the same way. We all want to opt out. Again, this is Michael Belik of 232 Hawthorne in Royal Oak. Thank you for your consideration and have a good night.
Uh, hello, my name is John Gletkin. I see tonight that you will be adding to your list of top voter suppression hits with item number 15 on the agenda, your proposed changes to the city charter regarding elections. You know that your proposal to supplant Royal Oak City Charter regulations as approved by Royal Oak voters and remaining totally legal with state regulations would give you more control, though vague, over which proposals get placed on a ballot. Did your high-priced attorneys from Clark Hill that you hired to further fight the present city charter and the veterans lawsuit suggest that? You know, it's really bad enough that you're fighting to keep illegally submitted ballot proposal supported by almost 900 signatures to appear on the November ballot. But now, besides the city attorney, you've hired expensive lawyers from, what is it, uh, Clark Hill to help you violate our city charter. Another of your ballot proposals tonight, as outlined in item 15, is so blatantly personal to you and control over city laws that it becomes even more offensive as you try to keep people from voting on the veterans proposal in November. In that one, you're proposing changes to the present city charter so that when the mayor resigns, that's your new added language, when the mayor resigns, the position is filled not by a voter of the city of Royal Oak chosen by the commission as it now reads, but it will be mandated to go to the mayor pro temp. Madam Perush exactly in this case. You are so very transparent in this language directly related to you, Mr. Mayor, that when you resign after one year into your next term to run for Jim Ellison's seat in Lansing, surprise, the mayoral seat will automatically be given exactly to Ms. Perush. With what you are proposing, there would be no question of the seat possibly going to the mayoral candidate receiving the next highest amount of votes in an election you assume you will win, even though you only squeaked by with 56% of the vote last time. Making all this happen for you personally is so very important that you will make sure it is set up that way with a proposal on the ballot, while at the same time fighting the residents with high-priced lawyers to not let them vote on the veterans proposal. Again, supported by almost 900 signatories and done legally under our present city charter. Good luck in running in a Democratic primary next year as a candidate with such a long track record of voter suppression and violating the city charter. That's not the Democrat, Democratic Party ideals that I grew up with. I'm sorry. Goodbye.
Hi, this is Tom Roth. I'm the commander of the John Wenelin Post 253 of the American Legion, and I am a Royal Oak resident, period. I'm calling today because of the plans to place a charter amendment on November's ballot. This is nothing more than voter suppression. Currently, what is in place is more than sufficient to actually make things work in Royal Oak. But you just do not want to follow the rules that are set in place. You want to change it so that you can put anything through so that nothing will ever go to a vote again. This is completely wrong, and you know what it is? It's voter suppression. You know that as well as I do. You know the rules. You just decide you don't want to follow them. And I'm saying that as a collective view to every single one of you on the commission, including the mayor. The actions of this commission are typical and continue a pattern of intentionally violating local laws. Currently, you're faced with opposition and litigation caused because you refuse to follow your own law regarding the veterans memorial. In addition to refusing to follow the 2007 law designated to allow for a vote and to protect our rights, you're expanding their oppressive tactics. You're sneaking in a change to the law so we will no longer have a viable chance to protect ourselves by placing issues on a ballot. This is pure and simple voter suppression. This leaves the commission as the only ones who can realistically achieve placing a new law on the ballot, no matter what. I will not stand for it, and neither will the citizens of Royal Oak. You will find out what voter suppression does to you when you try to put this ballot, I'm sorry, when you try to put this on the ballot in November. We will come out strong and we will not be supporting this, and we will rally our people, the citizens of Royal Oak against this. If you have any questions, you know how to reach me. Reach out to me. I want to make this work. I came to Royal Oak because I thought it was a wonderful city and a great place for my wife and I to settle down for the rest of our lives. You're making it very difficult to do so if you're going to continue to suppress and do things that suppress the vote of the people and the citizens of Royal Oak. Thank you very much.
I'm Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard, uh, 39-year resident of Oakland, of, uh, of Royal Oak. Um, I want to express again, as I had before, how appalled I am by the amount of misinformation and misrepresentation that is going on from the, especially having to do with the creation of the park and the moving of the veterans memorial. Um, I'm particularly offended by the use of the phrase that's repeated over and over again. Well, it's only 40 feet we're moving it. That is a classic example of an emotional fallacy in argument. It's a classic red herring. The, the, the amount of the move is irrelevant. Any move that destroys the amphitheater for gatherings is the issue. Planning, the planning change will not restore that amphitheater. In fact, it'll be very similar to having the, the veterans events in the city hall parking lot. Unacceptable. I'm also deeply concerned about the charter changes that you are proposing for elections. These home rule requirements, uh, do not fit a small city like Royal Oak and will basically preclude any citizen initiative petitions from there on, here and forward. Um, and again, that's just wrong. You really need to consider the citizens of Royal Oak's, uh, First Amendment rights to petition the government to redress grievances. For shame. I'm Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404.
Hello, this is Dan Taylor calling from, uh, 2203 North Vermont. Calling to follow up on an email that I sent to the city commission, including the mayor earlier this afternoon. Um, calling in regards to a incident we had at our house, uh, the other day. Um, a neighbor's dog has gotten out of their yard three times this year. Um, the most recent time was on Friday. Um, it chased my dog into my house. Um, and after calling the police after each incident, it's pretty clear that the police aren't able to do anything directly. Uh, I've emailed the mayor, uh, Fournier about it. I've emailed the chief of police about it. I've called code enforcement. I've called animal control. Um, and unfortunately, there's never been any remedy, any solution that has kept my family safe. At this point, it, it's, it's clear to me that no action has been taken to secure the, the, the dogs in my neighbor's yard. I followed every procedure I could think of, and now, uh, as a last-ditch effort, um, appealing to the city commission, hoping somebody on the commission can help get resolution and remedy to this. I will say, um, disappointed that the only, of all the messages I've sent, the only city employee that's, that's actually called me and spoke to me was, uh, on Friday. Uh, and it was actually a, a city of Berkeley employee that we outsourced animal control to. So I'm really hoping that somebody gives me a call back via the, the phone number I provided in my email. Um, again, the, the incident, most recent incident happened Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, June 10th. Um, did file a police report, um, but this was the third time this year that I filed a police report for the same issue, and the, uh, neighbor has done nothing to remedy the situation. And at this point, my four-year-old, my pregnant wife, my small pet, um, plain and simply aren't able to, uh, enjoy our yard and now the inside of our home safely without this nuisance coming into our home. So again, I followed a process. I've reached out to everybody I can, uh, over several months. Nothing seems to have happened, um, to control the situation. Uh, I'm imploring somebody on the city commission to, um, help find a resolution. Any effort is, is sincerely appreciated. At this point, we are considering leaving the community and finding a city that won't tolerate, um, this kind of, uh, a neighbor like we have, uh, who lives at 2121 North Vermont. Uh, his issues are well documented, and at this point, we are looking at leaving, and I truly hope we can find a resolution that doesn't force my pregnant wife, myself, and my four-year-old to pick up and move to a different community. So again, we'd really appreciate any and all help. Uh, I've sent an email, and if somebody could please call me on my cell phone provided in the email, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Carol Hennessy, uh, Royal Oak. I was appalled at the Memorial Day service Mr. London put on. It was a disgrace when, um, Mayor Fournier was going to read the proclamation to the grand marshal and he announced the police honor guard was going to fold the American flag. It should have been two separate things. The family of the grand marshal couldn't see him receive the plaque, and it took away from the grand marshal. The honor guard did what they were told, but the folding of the flag is sacred. The wording that goes with the, the folding of the flag is so special. That was not done because the mayor was reading the proclamation. We knew before this that the mayor didn't care about veterans when he went and moved the memorial, especially just before Memorial Day without voter approval. By him doing that, he did, by him doing what he did at the Memorial Day service only proves he doesn't know better or he doesn't care. This all stems back to the commission's refusal to obey the 2007 law approved by 90% of the citizens requiring a vote if any changes are made to the veterans memorial or the designated land. Be ashamed of yourself.
Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission, that concludes this evening's public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. Um, I think we're going to get to a number of those topics tonight. Uh, so, um, I appreciate everyone taking the time to call in. Um, I do appreciate the compliment about, you know, I have been working out a little bit, but no matter how much, uh, weight I've been trying to lift, I, I wasn't able to single-handedly move the memorial. Uh, that was a decision that was made by this body by means of a vote, a lot of public input, um, a couple of years ago. So, um, I take the compliment, but I'm, I'm not that strong, uh, and certainly not that powerful as one individual on a body of seven. So, um, I guess we will jump into our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda to speak about further? Or separate? All right, looking at Mr. Colo. I don't see any movement unless the screen, okay, we verified his screen is not frozen. Okay, all right. Well, then I will, uh, read the consent agenda, and then hopefully someone can make a motion to, uh, approve it as presented. So now the consent agenda does consist of city commission, special meeting budget work session minutes from May 19th, city commission meeting minutes from May 24th, claims from June 1st, June 4th, June 15th, approval of purchase orders, contract modification, extension janitorial services, city buildings, appointment of representative and alternative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority and Water Advisory Boards, approval of engineering division annual fees, uh, contract modification for sidewalk improvements, contract modification to contract asphalt resurfacing improvements, planning commission recommendation, rezoning of 600 West 11 Mile Road, second reading, approval of social districts license applications, approval of renewal of Midwest employers casualty excess workers compensation services, approval of renewal, set with claims management service workers, uh, compensation services, and to receive and file the historic district commission application to Michigan Certified Local Government Program in the May 2021 investment report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read? Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? All right, discussion on the consent agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the consent agenda is approved, which brings us to item 13, which is the appeal of Tiffany's training COVID-19 temporary use permit revocation. Um, I see Deputy Chief Frazier is here and Chief O'Donoghue.
Uh, hello, Mayor. Uh, yep, this, this item, uh, we did get some indication from the applicant that, uh, she wanted to withdraw her appeal. Um, she did experience a death in the family, so, uh, we can move forward with the hearing or not, but I don't believe the, uh- not, but I don't believe the, uh, uh, you know, I don't think the business owners are available or, or planning on coming today.
And to be clear, this isn't a, it's not a public hearing, is it? It's just, uh, an appeal to us, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, commissioners, uh, Commissioner Prush?
If she changes her mind, would she have an opportunity to appeal this later on, or is this her only opportunity? I, I'm assuming that the revocation will stay in place until she takes some action to appeal and we take some action.
Yeah, yeah, yes, uh, Commissioner, when, uh, we, we informed her of this hearing, she did indicate she had a, her father was in hospice, so, uh, we asked if she preferred to wait, she said no. Um, so, uh, would have no objection if we wanted to wait and, uh, maybe reach out to her in a week or so and see if she's changed her mind, uh, we're okay with that.
I don't know that would necessarily make any difference in our determination, um, but, um, but anyway, that, that's good to know. Thank you.
I think having her here to speak, like, is the best opportunity to have any, have any impact on our decision. So if it's, if the chief is comfortable with delaying and, and we're pushing it back and seeing if she reaches out and is wanting to go forward a few weeks from now, seems like the thing to do, it remains revoked until the appeal takes place, right?
Yes.
So I don't know, do I move to table this, do I? No?
Or do we just, uh, not take any action on it? What's the, what's the best recommendation that? Moving forward, uh, Commissioner Douglas has her hand up?
Yeah, I think the, the correct motion is motion to postpone until the June twenty-eighth meeting or she has, uh, confirmed her desire not to appeal. So I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, we have a second by Commissioner Colo, I think? No, okay, do we have a second on that motion? A second by Commissioner Dubak? Got discussion on the motion. Commissioner Colo?
So, I, Commissioner Douglas, I like the first part of that, except the second part really leaves it open-ended. Or until she decides to appeal, I mean, that is a long process.
I'm sorry, I should have said if she decides to appeal. That is, we will hold a hearing on June twenty-eighth or she can notify us that she doesn't, confirm that she doesn't want it. That's my intention. Not that it would be open-ended after the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
The revocation remains in place, remember, this is an appeal, so, you know, the permit expires anyhow and, um, you know, the activities can't take place. She's just getting an opportunity to think about it and determine if she wants to appeal at a different time, given the death in the family and the courtesy that the commission's granting. But it's not like the operation will be able to continue to resume under the permit. That's her decision on the appeal side of it. Okay. Any other discussions on the motion? All right, um, well, I guess we'll wait to talk about it then. Um, so I'll call for the vote since there's a motion on the table. Uh, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, so just for transparency to anybody that's watching that may be impacted by this, we postpone the appeal. The education is still in place, um, that the police department put in place. So therefore, um, unless, uh, you know, the petitioner appeals and the appeal is successful, uh, the outdoor permit is effect canceled. And, you know, the, the business air cannot continue with its activities under the, the purview of the permit, so, hopefully that's clear to the business as well at the moment, and the operators that may be there. So I'm sure we'll do a courtesy call, uh, from our PD maybe to the business, just to let them know what transpired tonight. Good. Okay. Um, that brings us to item fourteen, which is a public hearing and adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Fiscal Year Budget and General Appropriation Act. And I see Director Rudd. She just popped up there, left, right, right, left, just.
Good evening, City Commissioners. And this item is a request for a public hearing and adoption of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, which includes the General Appropriation Act with the city, uh, millage rates. Um, this, uh, public hearing was properly noticed in the Royal Daily Tribune prior to the, um, city commission's, um, budget work sessions conducted, um, in mid-May. Um, there are a few changes, um, requested that have been incorporated into the, uh, resolution that you have as an attachment this evening, slightly different from the document that, uh, you received, um, in May, um, that we reviewed. Uh, I believe it was the seventeenth and the nineteenth of May, where are, uh, the two evenings, uh, we had budget work sessions, okay? And those are, uh, um, bullet points pointed, uh, pointed out there in the center of the, um, commission letter this evening. Um, the resolution consists of, um, nine different parts and we went over those, um, during our budget work session on the seventeenth, I believe. And, um, the first, uh, resolution, um, are the various, um, budget totals general fund and the special revenue funds. And we do not officially adopt any of the other funds. And, um, is, uh, requested that you consider, uh, these, uh, handful of changes, um, that are bulleted here, um, they're not real material, um, they're mostly decreases with the exception of, um, a transfer for the, uh, Commission for the Arts and, uh, Memorial Day Parade. That's the only real, um, increase in expenditures, um, that's included there. And then, um, uh, the resolution, um, number two is the, um, city millage rates. And then, um, there are, um, the various, um, annual resolutions that we have after, after that. There's no real changes, um, requested, uh, for twenty-one, twenty-two with the exception of, um, purchase orders that go to commission, um, increased to fifteen thousand from ten thousand five hundred. And then, um, the increase, um, to bid public work projects increasing from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand. And that, that was discussed during the work session.
Questions for Ms. Rudd? Uh, Commissioner Macy?
Um, why the hundred thousand dollar change for the auto parking fund?
Uh, that was just to make sure that we, uh, met the, um, uh, revenue bond covenant.
All right, um, Ms. Schwanger, did we have anybody call in for this public hearing?
Fornier, members of the city commission, we had no public comment on the public hearing.
Okay, from a technical point of view, I will technically open up the public hearing. Given Ms. Schwanger's, um, response, uh, there are no comments. So then I will close the public hearing and bring the document back to the side of the table for any motions that any commissioners choose to make. Commissioner Douglas?
So with, there are nine res, there are nine numbered resolution. But is the first item here also a separate resolution, the General Appropriations Act? So does that really mean there are ten? Ms. Rudd?
Yeah, that was a question, um, uh, a, a few years ago, and it was decided that the first one, um, really does not, um, do anything. So, um, there are nine, yeah, just because, because it says be it resolved, but, um, there are nine only, and the first one being the adoption by, uh, by fund as, as the first one.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, I will move, uh, approval of resolution one.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion on the movement of resolution one. All right, listen, I'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right, resolution one is complete. Anybody else? Commissioner Colo?
I move approval of resolution number two.
Motion by Commissioner Colo for to move resolution number two, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush, discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Did you say Dubak?
Yes, Mr. Dubak? And I vote yes, okay. First and second resolutions have been passed unanimously. My resolution three. Commissioner Dubak?
I'll move for approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? Commissioner Douglas, discussion, or is it just a second? Okay. All right, I don't see any discussion, so we'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, brings us to resolution four. Commissioner Prush?
I move approval of resolution number four.
We're motion for resolution four, is there a second? Commissioner Colo, discussion on the motion to move forward with resolution four. Uh, Commissioner Macy?
I just want to say, because in case they weren't watching, uh, budget meetings where this was discussed, the billing administrative flat fee for the water and sewage rates is going up a dollar, and we did talk about that. And we did ask, uh, Ms. Rudd for a description of what that was for. Um, and it's much, it's much more than just an administrative fee, the fee of billing, it, it covers basically all of the overhead for this. And it's the attempt of the department to shift the costs to where they belong. So instead of charging us for the overhead in the water rates themselves, all the overhead is shifting to this administrative cost. Um, we're not even all the way there yet, but we're, that's how we're doing this. So just clarifying about that for people who didn't watch the budget meeting.
Some good accounting and bridging it to get there. Okay, all right, well, I'll call for the vote, uh, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to the next resolution, which is five. Commissioner Hunt?
I move to approve, number five.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hunt, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo? Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote, Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yeah.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Gets us to resolution six. Mr. Macy?
Move approval of resolution six.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush, all right, discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, brings us to resolution seven. We'll make a motion for resolution seven, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush? All right, discussion on seven? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote, Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, resolution eight. Anyone want to make a motion for resolution eight? Mr. Macy makes the motion for a second? Second by Commissioner Prush? All right, with none, we'll call for the vote, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. Resolution nine, anyone wish to make a motion? Motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? All right, discussion on nine. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote, oh, uh, Commissioner Colo?
Uh, sorry, Ms. Rudd, just really quick, um, you know, th- this has been a long nine, uh, resolutions here, so I just want, if someone's watching who doesn't typically watch a city commission meeting, we've talked about these at length for hours on end at two budget meetings before this, we had hearings. Um, we, we've, the staff did a wonderful job and took way too many questions from me probably going through this. So I just wanted to, uh, thank staff, thank Paul and everyone for, uh, putting this together, so, um, I just want to get that out there for this last vote.
I agree, this is a, a public hearing, um, certainly, uh, any lingering issues to be discussed, but you're, you are correct. We went through all of these in, in detail and, and most of these are, I don't want to say repeat for every year, but they're not brand new items that come to us, there might be some modifications, so, um, you know, it's, uh, we're, we're going through the motions by number, but, but definitely very familiar to all of us, so thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so we have a final resolution, Austin Wells, Commissioner Colo has, uh, got his mic on and his mute off, we'll start with him, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yeah.
And for sure Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, all right. Ms. Rudd? Should we? So I'm not sure the very last one, should we, um, should we move forward with, or is that, it doesn't look like it's tied to nine? Maybe it is.
Uh, that, but now, therefore be it resolved? Yes, yes it is.
Okay, good, I see that, I saw that orange line there and my heart just stopped for a second, I'm like, uh-oh. And then, uh, the now therefore, put it up with nine, okay, perfect. All right. Anything else, Ms. Rudd, besides sticking to the budget on this end?
No, that is it, thank you.
Okay, thank you for all your hard work, we know it's not just one person, I know staff, uh, has to contribute, but we know the, the hard work you put into this document, you and Tony and the rest of the staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. All right, that brings us to item fifteen, which is approval of ballot language charter review committee. Oh, there's Mr. Moore. How you doing, Mr. Moore?
Pretty good, Mayor Fournier. How you doing?
Pretty good.
Good, good.
We'll give you the, I guess, here to kind of walk us through the work of your committee recommendations that you're making.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Staff, Rob Moore, current chairman of the Royal Charter Review Committee. We have four proposals to come before your consideration this evening. Mayor, I'll just go ahead and go through them one at a time if that's preferable.
That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. So the first one, essentially a housekeeping amendment. This has to do with Chapter four having to do with elections as part of the charter. A while back, the voters approved to take out some provisions having to do with recalls in the charter that no longer aligned with state election law. What essentially would do is add Section thirty to Chapter four of the city charter, which would essentially state that all election laws have to do with the charter and that section would align up with the state law in terms of that regard. And again, it's essentially housekeeping, but we felt it was good to have that in there just for procedural purposes, just to have that in there. The next one is Chapter ten, Section three of Chapter ten, excuse me. And this one was actually brought to the committee by City Assessor Jim Guireman way back in 2015. This has to do with the Board of Review and the meetings and whatnot, essentially to align the charter with current best practices. This amendment, if adopted, would allow for the city assessor to name a designee to the Board of Review meeting so that he would no longer have to physically attend each and every Board of Review meeting. That's standard practice for most Board of Reviews throughout the state, most city departments and whatnot. So this, again, just kind of breaking along the charter in lines with best practices. The next one would have to do with eliminating the need for a public health officer, public health department in the city charter. Way back in 1921, when the city adopted its current charter, it had a public health department and whatnot. However, in years since, most small, medium-sized municipalities have long since outsourced this to the state, to the county, that is permissible under the Home Rule City Act. So essentially, this would do, this would reflect reality and state that it's no longer required. However, it would not eliminate the power of the city commission to so designate a public health officer or public health department in the future, if they decide to do so at that time. And the last one, the final one, is this is something that the committee has been discussing for quite some time, at least since 2013. Essentially, what this would do, this would essentially codify a accepted practice among many municipalities throughout the region, throughout the state, essentially that it would officially state that the mayor pro tem would become the mayor if the mayor, for whatever reason, would no longer be able to fill their role, and that they would have to resign that seat in order to do so. Again, this is just a longstanding tradition, a longstanding practice, essentially codify that in terms of the city charter. This is something that, again, we've been discussing for some time. We've been going back and forth on the language. It has been submitted to the commission for approval in the past. However, something usually comes up. There was one time where the state attorney general's office didn't quite like some of the language, just wasn't able to be rectified in time to get it on the ballot. So there've been several false starts with this, but we're confident that we have the language down. We're confident that this amendment is going to fulfill what it is intended to fulfill, and we're submitting it for your approval tonight. So those are the four proposed charter amendments that the committee is presenting for the, consider the commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for Mr. Moore? Mr. Macy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moore, for your hard work on this. So for the, I have a couple of questions. The first one is on the first one about acknowledging the state law on elections. So you're calling it housekeeping. My understanding is that this is how it already operates. Already, the charter has to be aligned with state, state election law. Is that?
Correct, correct. Anything, anything in the charter is essentially superseded by state election law. So just the idea behind this is just, we just wanted to reflect that in a language that's charted there.
So this doesn't change how the law operates in any way, from the way it is now? Nothing changes about it?
Not.
Okay. And then the next question I had was about the one about the mayor. So what if the mayor pro tem doesn't want to do it? Like, mayor and mayor pro tem are pretty different jobs in terms of, like, the mayor pro tem fills in as needed. And I, yeah, I just wondered, was that discussed at all? Is that one of the things that's come up before?
Actually, at our last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion about this. Concerns were expressed, a lot of diverging opinions, a lot of divergent perspectives were brought up in regards to this. I know some concerns have been expressed in regards to this, and the idea, trying to, if memory serves me correctly, and going off my notes, essentially is that it would kind of be, kind of parceled out, I mean, in terms of like what that was going to be in terms of commissioners and whatnot. So the idea goes is that, again, this is something that we kind of wrestled with for a while. There have been previous attempts at this in terms of the language, try to get that down. In fact, if you don't mind, I'm going to, I'm trying to find my notes here in terms of definitely what we discussed. I know Mr. List kind of had like some, some notes on this, and as far as that goes, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was here, so.
Well, well, Mr. Moore does that. I'll just add, Commissioner Macy, I mean, another thought about it is, you know, before, now, if this changes and it's approved, then I think that, you know, whoever accepts the role of mayor pro tem would know that this comes with, you know, that potential responsibility in the event that the mayor is unable to perform the duties and/or resigns and/or passes away in office, these sort of things. So, you know, that's a, that's one, I don't want to say measure, but, you know, I guess, understanding based on the charter. I see Commissioner Colo and then Commissioner Dubak.
Thank you, Ms. R. Just while we're on the topic of, of this fourth one, can, Mr. Moore, can you talk about the fifth one also? Because that kind of directly, if one, if the fourth one doesn't pass, the fifth one can't be enacted and vice versa, correct? And can you talk about the substance of the fifth one? Because I think we, we skipped over that a little.
Well, essentially, if memory serves me correctly, what this would do is essentially, if, if this doesn't get enacted in terms of what this says, that it would essentially revert to what was written in the fourth one. And again, I'm kind of going off my notes here. If you don't mind, if it's all right, I'm going to kind of defer to Mr. List here, because Mr. List actually like wrote the language and goes. So I just want to make sure that what I have here kind of lines up directly with the language that was written here, so. I'm sorry, is he not, is he not on the call? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, he's not, he's not on this evening.
Okay, so.
So I've, oh, Commissioner Dubak was actually next in line for the question.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Moore, for, yeah, the work you've done. I served on charter review for a few years, and I know it's not much celebrated and it's pretty dry. But I know you all put the time in to review, and like you said, I think three out of these are, are really just housekeeping. They don't have a substantive impact on policy or city operations or the operation of law. But the, the mayor pro tem one does, where right now the status quo is, and, you know, office of mayor is vacated for whatever reason. I believe the status quo right now is that the commission appoints mayor by majority vote. Is that right? Okay, so, and I understand when you pick a mayor pro tem who is there, you know, if the mayor is sick or has to step away from a meeting to run the meeting, that's, that's one commitment. I agree with Mr. Macy. Becoming mayor is a totally different commitment, both in time and responsibility. So I guess, so this is an actual substantive policy change. I'm wondering, in your discussions, did you discuss how does that better serve the interests of our voters or the operation of our city government?
Well, essentially, the bulk of the discussion, what this was, is that we kind of wanted to codify what was basically best of standard, best established practice right now. Essentially, most municipalities, when, for whatever reason, the mayor is unable to serve out his or her term, the mayor pro tem takes over, and of course, the mayor pro tem being the highest vote getter among the council or the commission candidates. So we kind of felt that that was a good reflection of the will of the people in terms of like who they would want to serve in that role. The mayor pro tem typically, and again, this, this is somewhat, it's not cut and dry across the board everywhere, but usually, the mayor pro tem is selected by the highest vote getter in the last elections. That's, that played a lot in terms of the role, in terms of what we've, there. And essentially, just kind of establishing, excuse me, codifying what's kind of been like a longstanding established tradition, a longstanding established best practice, is that the person who gets the most votes typically becomes the mayor pro tem, and the mayor pro tem would typically become the mayor if the need should ever arise. And that was, by and large, where we were coming from with this. Basically, again, we just wanted to kind of establish longstanding tradition, just kind of put in writing kind of like a best practice that's been established in many municipalities around the area, so.
It's helpful to understand where you're coming from, as I'm thinking about it. I mean, that's, it's a pretty substantive change versus the status quo right now, which is the majority of points. So I'm thinking on that and trying to see, because neither of those practices, neither in my eight, nine years at the table now, both things have happened where we, we have a point, we've voted on mayor pro tem, which the law is just, majority of the commission decides to mayor pro tem. And sometimes we've gone with highest vote getter, sometimes we have not. So that has not been a hard and fast practice for us. And in the one instance where we had to appoint a vacancy, when there was a vacancy in the mayor's office, the commission did not appoint the mayor pro tem. And that was the decision after deliberation of the body of, of, you know, who folks, and who wanted to do it, and then who folks thought was the right fit at the time. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand, taking that autonomy away, I'm not sure that, but this is more for our discussion, but the context helps. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
And also, maybe, maybe it was more if you had the discussion, I would imagine, too, we have seven members of the body, and although this didn't happen, you know, that I can recall in recent history, but if the mayor departs the commission for whatever reason, now you have six, and you potentially could have a deadlock. You know, three and three, never voting, like, if you have two factions, you know, going into deadlock and never coming to the determination who they want as mayor. So you have a, you know, sort of a pre-prescribed succession plan for, you know, the mayor position, perhaps. I'm not sure if that came up in your discussions, but, you know, that's a mathematical possibility, so to speak, with an even number of, of folks that would remain.
Right. Yeah, I can understand those concerns, too. And so that's essentially, and again, we did go quite a bit back and forth at the meeting. This is, and again, as I mentioned previously, this is something that the committee has been in discussion about for a number of years now, trying to get the language, trying to get it to the point where it's going to best serve all current perspectives and whatnot, to try to get this to, to the point where it'd be effective. So that is something that we looked at, as something, and again, we tried to listen to all perspectives, as we always do. We try to just kind of come up with language that's going to work best. And it may not work best all around, but it's something that we definitely try to take into account as far as that goes, so.
I guess, talk, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I represent the city commission on this committee, and I absolutely bow to Mr. Moore's experience and expertise here. But I'll try and add a couple of comments just from the discussions of the committee. And, and a lot of our discussion was what if, and some of those scenarios might have been improbable, but then again, that's the kind of exercise you go through. And, and one of the what ifs was, what if nobody wants to be mayor? How do you decide who's going to take that position, assuming you're going to choose someone from the existing body? So this makes it clear who will take that seat. Leaving it the way it is, again, sets up a what if scenario. Let's say we decide on a commissioner to step in as, to, to serve as mayor, not necessarily the pro tem serving as mayor. Then do we leave their seat open until the next election? Or do we fill their seat by appointment until the next election? At which point, do they leave the commission and the mayor, the person who's been serving as mayor goes back to complete their commission term? It's, it, we could see scenarios where that could get very confusing. The proposal now, the recommendation here works best if the mayor pro tem is someone in the, from the next election, that is, in the opposite cycle. Because there could be, again, a what if scenario, and that is, you point a commissioner who's been on the commission for one year to the seat, and they then, a year later, have to run for their own seat, a seat that they were already comfortable in. So those were the, kind of the things that, the role-playing we played out to come up with the solution that we are offering here today.
Mr. Dubak, and then Mr. Colo?
I guess, yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing that conflict. My understanding is, you know, law would already prevent you from holding two offices at one time. So as soon as you accept and swear into the office, before you could swear into the office of mayor, you have to resign your seat as a commissioner or do it simultaneously. And as my recollection, that's what we did when Commissioner Fournier became Mayor Fournier, was that he had to resign his commission seat in order to be appointed as mayor. And I'm pretty sure that's well-established in Malta. You can't hold those two offices simultaneously. So I don't think we necessarily need to codify that in charter when it's already well-established. I just, I'm, I'm struggling to see, because I don't see any real legal conflicts here, and I'm not really seeing a tremendous benefit to the voters, to the city, or to even the operation of the commission in making this change. So the other ones are housekeeping, which have no substantive impact on any of, any of us, on residents or on city operations. But this, it is a substantive change, and I'm still not understanding the value to the community.
Mr. Colo?
I just want to add here that if there were a case where there was a six-six and a three-three tie for each, I'm sorry, a six-member commission and a three-three tie for each mayor, one of the lawyers on the call can correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have a mayor pro tem who's already in place, whose job would be to act as mayor at the time. So we would have someone serving as mayor, filling out those functions, signing everything that they're bound to by law, to our, you know, our figurehead of, of the committee or the commission, while we figure out who actually becomes mayor.
That's probably true.
That is correct.
Okay. The real question is, on this one, is, what I'm seeing is, you know, is it worth it putting it to voters to see if they want sort of a specified, direct, you know, succession plan? Or if they want to leave it up to, you know, continue the standard practice, which is typically following tradition, like Mr. Moore states, and having the flexibility to literally appoint anybody on the commission. You know, so it really comes down to, I think, just, I mean, that basic point. Because Commissioner Colo is right, you know, a mayor will, somebody will fill in the role, you know, the mayor pro tem, unless the mayor pro tem quits. You know, then you gotta go down one more level in the charter, figure out what to do next. So, yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm not passionate about it. I do trust the work our charter review committee does, and the discussions and dialogue and thoughts that they have, and certainly I can support one way or the other. Christopher Prush?
The advantage to the change that I see is one that Mr. Moore articulated. And that is that whoever assumes the role of mayor pro tem, if this were to pass, would go into the office assuming that that is a possibility. I mean, it, it's a scenario that happens so rarely, when a mayor, for whatever reason, has to leave office, whether it's illness or disability or, or whatever. I can only think of one instance in my history where that had happened, where that happened. So it, it's not a scenario that is going to come up frequently. But at least if we do have this change, anyone who assumes the role of mayor pro tem and is selected and actually accepts it knows that that is indeed a possibility, that if, in fact, the mayor, for whatever reason, leaves. That if in fact the mayor, for whatever reason, leaves, um, it's up to him or her to, to fill that role. And I think that's an advantage, um, to having someone who's, who's at least in the back of their minds preparing for that scenario, designated and, and everybody knows who it is.
Commissioner Macy. Well, you know what, Commissioner Macy, I vote Commissioner Hunt, uh, just because she, she hasn't had a chance to chime in yet. And then Commissioner Macy.
That's fine. Um, thank you, Mr. Moore, for your, your work on this committee. Uh, and I just had a quick question. I know you indicated that in the past, this type of language has been struck down by the AG. And now you're confident that, you know, you have language that would be able to make it to the ballot, should it pass this body. Uh, what gives you that confidence? Does this mirror any of the other, um, charters that you've been able to review? Or what gives you that confidence?
Um, yes, um, typically what we've done, uh, when we had languages such as like this, when we have like certain instances, uh, we kind of typically research other charters, we kind of look and kind of see, uh, what, uh, they do, what they've had. Uh, there's a little bit of diversity in terms of, uh, what other municipalities have done. Um, Ann Arbor, Birmingham, I'm just throwing out a few examples here. Ann Arbor, Birmingham, Ferndale are somewhat similar in terms of approach. Um, Port Huron and Port Huron is a very unique charter because, uh, they are, it's considerably longer than the standard charter. It actually goes into significant detail as far as like, um, how and how it goes about this and whatnot in terms of the succession process and whatnot. Uh, so what we typically do and what we did here is we researched a wide variety of different charters and whatnot. Going back, we kind of looked at different notes and, uh, kind of went back. And, and again, because this is something that's, uh, the committee's kind of been looking at for quite some time to kind of come along with this. And, um, we worked directly with Mr. List in terms of language. Um, and the state AG's office had quite a bit of time to review this. So we are relatively confident, uh, that, uh, this, that we've got it right. And, uh, we hope to put this before the voters for their consideration in terms of that. So.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I believe that Mr. List did forward this proposed language to the attorney general's office for a preliminary review, not for final approval, but just to get some informal feedback. And I believe that they, the language that is presented tonight, um, is done with that feedback in mind. So there is a relatively high degree of confidence that the, um, the attorney general's office would approve it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Macy.
I think I'm kind of with Commissioner Dubak in that I'm not seeing the benefit of tying the commission's hands in this way. And I'm thinking, just thinking of a few things. One of them is about the mayor pro tem and mayor are different, but mayor pro tem is a role. And what if you, an election passes and none of the experienced commissioners want to do, want to be mayor and just don't want to be mayor pro tem? And then we end up getting mayor pro tem to someone who's new on the commission, um, if the highest vote getter, for instance. And they, they don't, they aren't experienced in the Robert's rules. And it's, you know, you want a more mayor pro tem who knows what they're doing. Um, also, like, if you go into it thinking like, okay, I could become mayor, fine, but things change, circumstances change. And if it happens fairly suddenly in the middle of something, maybe you don't at that moment want to be mayor. And then what happens? What? Do you have to step down as mayor pro tem and then we have no one? So it just seems like we can already appoint the mayor pro tem if that is the will of the commission. But now saying that this is the only thing we can do could possibly, I feel like, back us into some corners at, at moments on different decision making throughout the process. So I think I, I think I don't like this change. Um, I hate to say that after it seems like this has been back and forth a bunch of times to the commission. Um, and then maybe I'm the only one who feels that way this time. But I guess I feel like I like the flexibility more than the, more than this option.
Anybody else? Mr. Prush.
Don't all roll your eyes, but this is another historical note. In July of 1979, Mayor Peggy Lewis resigned for various reasons. He was just upset with a lot of policies that he was undertaking and decided he was going to leave. He may not only left the office, but he left the city. Um, at the time, Barbara Hallman was mayor pro tem. She had been the highest vote getter. And the assumption was that she was going to be appointed as mayor to fill that position. Um, but, uh, the city commission at the time didn't have the confidence that she would be willing to do that role. And so they picked someone else and they picked Commissioner Peter Webster to fill out the rest of the mayor's full term. Um, uh, she was not happy. Uh, her supporters were not happy. Well, she turned around and ran for mayor, uh, at the next mayoral election in one handling. Uh, so she got a revenge. So, so there, there is the politics that can, that can play into this unless the charter language is pretty clear as to what happens. Um, there are downsides to making it as crystal clear as this language would, would make it, as Krishna Mason just articulated. You might have someone in that position that really doesn't want it or is not qualified to do it. But on the other hand, uh, you kind of leave it up to, uh, the politics of the day sometimes. If it's not clearly spelled out and you run into situations like the ones coming up. So, um, I don't think there's any perfect solution. But I think the fact that a number of cities have used this as, as their template for, for dealing with the situation, which is rare, we all know. Um, is probably the best indicator that if we're going to make any changes in the office, it's probably the best way to go.
Commissioner Macy next.
I just want to point out that the much more recent history is that we may not have a mayor Fournier today if we had gone with the mayor, if this had been in the charter, um, when, uh, Representative Ellison left the, the position. So, I mean, there's, of course, there's politics. Of course, there's going to be politics in this, this decision. We're, we're all politicians sitting at the table. Um, but it seems to me that allowing the majority of the body to make that decision makes more sense than, um, having this appointment and then being, placing so much on this appointment that doesn't have right now. And I, I, I mean, I understand, I feel like this, it's, it's a way to solve a problem. Um, I just feel like it could also create some as well.
Mr. Dubak.
Um, yeah, I agree. I just feel like I, and that there could be a circumstance. Um, it feels more likely there's a circumstance where you have someone that was willing to be mayor pro tem, uh, at the time. And then say the mayor's, uh, seat is vacant and, and now that's something that they just, because of personal circumstances or whatever, don't feel prepared to do. Um, right now, the commission has the discretion to choose who they think is going to be the best leader for the city and for the commission. Uh, taking that discretion away, I'm, I'm still struggling to understand how that benefits the city. Um, it, you know, if it was fifty fifty and it didn't make, you know, I didn't care, we got thrown on the ballot. And so, you know, if residents want to vote for this, but I'm honestly struggling to see any benefit. And I think that's, you know, when we get the conspiracy theories, now that we should legislate in response to conspiracy theories. But, um, I think, because I'm hard pressed to say what the benefit is, I, I don't see the value in, in placing it on the ballot. There's no, I don't see any legal complications that exist currently. Um, right now, people selected by Royal Oakers have the discretion to fill that seat. And that's the way that it's been throughout, you know, the history of our city. So I'm not sure what problem we're solving for or what we're improving with this particular charter amendment.
You're not suggesting it's unchartered waters, are you, Commissioner Dubak?
I'm suggesting that if there's not a, a problem to solve, then we can't point to a, a, even a potential benefit for residents at the least outweighs potential problems. I'm not really sure. I, I'm, I'm not really sure that it's worth going through a charter amendment election.
Well, I, I, I will say, I think the charter committee has, um, provided some, some rationale and, and potential benefits. I think the real question is, you know, as they position it to us, do those benefits, you know, weigh enough on the scale to put this particular fourth and fifth item on the ballot, uh, compared to the established process? So I think, I think they have articulated some of the benefits, but, but do they rise to the level of making a change? And do those benefits outweigh the benefits of flexibility, let's say, that are currently, you know, permitted under the existing, you know, charter language? Uh, Commissioner Kolo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think one thing that would push me in one way or another on this is if we had a mayor pro tem who was an elected position specifically that you ran and you asked the people Royal Oak to make you the mayor pro tem. Um, if that were the case, then it's, you know, I could see that being an instance where that would be the next person to elevate. Um, so I, I think I'm more inclined to agree with Commissioner Dubak and Commissioner Macy, uh, on where they stand with this.
I know this is something we've been grappling with since 2013. And, uh, so. All right, anybody else? So we, we do have some other provisions here. And just Mr. Moore, just to, you know, switching gears a little bit to some of the other housekeeping ones. I know we had some public comment and, and things of this nature, but we start looking at like this state law, uh, one, the first one. I mean, I remember you coming in front of us before, you know, uh, helping clean up our charter that said that only men who own land in Royal Oak can vote, you know, freeholders and things like that. So we, we know that there's antiquated language in our, in our charter from the era or era of which it was written. Um, and, um, you know, these things are here to just, you know, I mean, help provide clarity uh, to folks that may be going to the charter as a, as a document, not having to be recoiled because, you know, state law supersedes anything we can do here as a city on certain things, which in, in a lot of reasons is, is very, very good. Uh, that we have those provisions because the state law seems to be up to date on everything from civil rights to, you know, best practices. And, you know, whether we like it or not, folks in Lansing will, will make laws. And it affects under the home rule city, because we're all incorporated under the state, under the Home Rule City Act. You know, we, we have to oblige. So, um, those, uh, I mean, it's the same sort of thing, cut from the same cloth, right, Mr. Moore? I mean, some of those ones in the past you brought, this is just one that's no different.
Correct. Um, and yeah, and that's, um, and that's, that's one of the tasks, uh, I mean, if the charter, uh, excuse me, the charter committee, um, has essentially to, modernize the charter somewhat, uh, to ease its, um, ability of understanding, uh, to make sure that it's aligned with the current law, uh, statewide, federal wide and, uh, best practices as well. And, um, and that, that's part of it. Uh, this is a charter that was adopted in 1921 and, uh, was largely, um, pretty much copy and pasted from the Village of Royal Oak Charter of 1891. And obviously times change, circumstances change, uh, things change to the point where it has to be amended and whatnot. Uh, obviously, I mean, there are some provisions, uh, from the Home Rule Act and whatnot that have been there since 1909 that are there. But, uh, times changed, uh, sometimes, uh, a lot of that has to change along with it. And, uh, and that, and that's essentially what we try to do as, as that committee goes. Uh, we're, I'm certainly not going to say we're going to get it right a hundred percent of the time. Uh, but we are definitely going to do our absolute level best, uh, to present, um, amendments to the voters of Royal Oak that, uh, we feel will, uh, best, uh, modernize the charter to the point where it's, uh, to ease its understanding and to, uh, make sure that it's, uh, going to be a document that, uh, lives up to the, the needs of the city. Uh, not just for right now, but, uh, for years to come. Uh, we're going to make those, uh, recommendations as well, uh, how it's going to best benefit the city years, years from now.
All right. Well, I'll put it in the hands of the commission here. Uh, Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'll get the ball rolling. I'm going to suggest that we deal with each of these individually. And I'll start by moving, um, uh, making a motion that the city commission, um, forwards, uh, item, the proposal amending the charter to acknowledge state law on elections, um, to the attorney general for approval. And with their approval, to place it on the November ballot.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. All right, discussion.
I think we've, I think this horse is dead.
Yep. All right. Well, I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Kolo.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Prush.
Yes.
Mr. Dubak.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, uh, regarding the proposal amending chapter 10, section three about the assessor designating a designee, uh, again, that we forward this language to the attorney general's office. And with their approval, place this on the November ballot.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion.
Yeah, I will chime in on this. Um, uh, so as, as, as Mr. Moore explained, um, these, the, uh, board of review hearings are lengthy. You can have many, many people coming forward, um, for consideration. And the action that takes place is the action of the board of review. They are the decision makers. They have the data in front of them as provided by the, the, um, assessor. But there's no real formal role for this assessor specifically. Um, so that's why, and again, with the input from the assessor, the committee concluded that this was an, a, a recommended action.
I'd also argue too, that, I mean, this benefits, um, citizens who wish to appeal things because they don't and are not fully dependent on a singular individual's schedule and timing and all of that. So it offers more options and flexibility to have these hearings as well, which is a benefit to the public theoretically. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kolo.
I, I just want to, um, talk about, I, I think Mr. Moore said before, i- is this best practice across the state? I mean, I've not been to many board of assessing, um, or board review assessments. Does the assessor not show up to these? Do they send a designee?
By and large, um, it's understanding that, uh, that is, uh, standard practice. Um, the assessor certainly can, uh, attend border review meetings. I think it would largely depend on, uh, like the size, the municipality, uh, the intricities involved. Uh, say if it like, uh, just, I somewhat speculating here, but I'm saying if we're like a small rural township, uh, they, uh, he or she might be ornamentally involved in that. If it's, um, if it's a medium sized city, like say Royal Oak, it's a larger one, probably not for the most part. Uh, but, um, this is largely, uh, that is largely the case, that, uh, the assessor does not, uh, tend physically. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. I'll call for the vote with Dubak.
Yes.
Mr. Prush.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Kolo.
Yes.
Oh, yes. All right. I'm waiting for the hand from Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Douglas.
I would move, uh, regarding the charter amendment eliminating the requirement of a public health official, um, that we, as I said before, forward this language to the attorney general's office. And with their approval, place this issue on the November ballot.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kolo. Discussion. Commissioner Kolo.
I'll say when I first read this, I was a little surprised that in the middle of a pandemic, we wanted to eliminate this office, um, even though it has not been, you know, serviced in decades. Um, and then I, I looked into a little bit more and actually I was reading some old minutes of the city, uh, because I'm just a dork. And I was reading a 1941 meeting. And in this 1941 meeting, there is a report from the health department official who lists that there were 29 cases of chicken pox, 18 cases of general measles, 180 cases of regular measles, scarlet fever, whooping cough, um, and placards that he put up on people's houses to let people know that that is a diseased house. Um, so that, that is what that official used to do, uh, 80 years ago. That is not a function that is anymore in this city. Uh, Oakland County does, um, well, they don't put placards on your house anymore, but they track communicable disease. So, um, with, with that being said, I, I definitely am okay, uh, removing this position.
Dubak.
Anyway, no, I was just saying, Mr. Commissioner Kolo, I want to reiterate, we are not removing a position. This has failed before because people don't like the sound of removing it, but this exists elsewhere in government. It's not a city position anymore.
It's no longer our role. We, we found greater. I mean, we have a whole staff of epidemiologists at Oakland County that take care of this at a very professional and effective level. And we saw that during this COVID outbreak. And, and you know, our city staff and us and our, and our firefighters and, and everybody worked very closely with the county and. outbreak and, and you know, our city staff and us and our, and our firefighters and, and everybody worked very closely with the county and everything Commissioner Colo said, you want to know where the cases are by zip code and all of this, no problem. They're doing a great job tackling this. So it's, it's not a role that is required or necessary. You know, in, in today's way of managing health. Okay. All right. Well, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruce.
Yes.
Mr. Duba.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Mr. Colo.
I move that we do not adopt four and five.
A motion by Commissioner Colo, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. I think we, we talked a lot about it. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against the, the motion only because I supported this with the committee and saw the work that they did and appreciated their thoughts behind it. But I, I mean, I'm not, not devastated at the prospect that these items might not make it to the ballot.
Yeah, I, Commissioner Bruce.
I'm in support of the motion, even though I think that this generally is a good but if we don't have consensus on the commission as to what this Charter Amendment should, should be, there's no way the community is going to come to some kind of consensus on it. So I don't think it's, it, it makes sense to even put it on the ballot. So for that reason, I'm going to vote in support of the motion, even though basically I think it's a, it's a pretty good idea.
Anybody else? And I'm just going to echo what Commissioner Bruce said. I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit indifferent. I see the pros and cons. I think the Charter Committee did excellent work and, you know, I think they, they made a position that, that you know, I was going to initially support, but after I heard Commissioner Bruce make that point, you know, maybe we bring it back when we have a little bit more consensus among the commission. Although ironically, you could say under the current position, you know, that they, we didn't have or the current Charter Language, you know, consensus, that could be an issue too. But, but I think Commissioner Bruce is, is right on this one because we are putting it to a vote to the community and you know, if we're not all aligned here, then maybe it's not the right time, although I do see, see the benefits. All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Duba.
Yes.
Mr. Bruce.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
No.
Mr. Colo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right. Well, I think that's it, Mr. Moore. We really do appreciate your time tonight. I think you did an excellent job explaining to us the background in the work you guys did and certainly appreciate your service on the Charter Review Committee. It's a, it's a tough job. You know, you got to go through a lot of detail reading and like you say, it's not just a matter of, you know, going with the, with the tide. You got to think about all the what ifs, you know, it's it's a
Well, well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I appreciate your time this evening. I appreciate your deliberation. I, I would add before I go that the committee thrives on suggestion. So if anyone on the commission, any staff members, and any citizens at large have anything that they would like the committee to take a look at in terms of the Charter, please reach out to me, reach out to City Attorney's Office. We, we will take a look at it. In fact, one of the things that I'm going to be doing soon is emailing the city manager and ask him to specifically to take a look at it and to reach out to department heads if there's anything they would like the committee to take a look at further. So we are at your service. We are at your disposal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor.
Take care. So that brings us to our next agenda item, which I believe is traffic approval of the May twenty twenty-one Traffic Committee Resolutions. Let's see a patient, Ms. Donahue here. Ms. Donahue.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm here to present the recommendations of the Royal Oak Citizens Traffic Committee. Our last meeting was on May twenty-fifth, and I have four recommendations for your consideration. The first item was from our Agenda Topic seven A. This is near the intersection of Austin Avenue and Marywood Drive, so just on the north side of the middle school. There was some concern presented to the committee about people heading southbound on Marywood, kind of clipping that corner and coming into oncoming traffic that's headed westbound on Austin. And so the committee is recommending that we install a double yellow center line just to get around that bend. And then also in accordance with the Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, to also install some supplementary signs that there's basically a directional arrow that tells you a turn is coming up, slow down, and then an advisory speed plaque of five miles per hour. The second recommendation has to do with a couple of T intersections in the southeast corner of town. So this is at Wellesley and Tufts and Wellesley and Yale Avenue. Both are just T intersections that currently don't have any signage installed. And we come across these periodically. As we go through the city, we'll hear from people about these. So standard practice has always been when there's a T intersection, put a stop sign in for the, basically the leg of the T. So they are recommending two stop signs be installed, one for each of those intersections. The third item was Topic seven C from our meeting, and this was a request to evaluate speeding on Durham Road between Thirteen Mile and Chester. So we did take a look at that and did a traffic study. The speed limit for the eighty-fifth percentile was only twenty-four miles per hour. The volume of traffic was in the medium range and there were no accidents along the corridor. So the committee is recommending no action be taken on that request. And then the final item was a request for hearing impaired child signs to be installed on Bowman Avenue. This is between Rochester and Ferris. One of the parents of a child who was recently diagnosed as hearing impaired reached out based on her doctor's recommendation to see if the city would install these signs. We did advise her that these can give a somewhat false sense of security. So, you know, still be advised that drivers aren't always going to pay attention to it. But we have installed these in the past and have kind of always had that stipulation that once the child is either eighteen years old or if you move away, those signs would then be removed. So I kind of included that as part of the resolution so that if we ever need to go back to it, we can remember when that sign is supposed to get taken away. And we'll of course share that with the property owner as well. So the recommendation there is to install a hearing impaired child sign, one at each end of the block. So depending on which way traffic is coming down the street, they will see the sign. And, and that was it, just the four items tonight.
Questions for City Engineer Donahue? Questions, I think you did a good job explaining it. Any motions or discussion? We have Commissioner Bruce.
I'm on approval of all four traffic committee recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion. All right, with none, call for the vote, Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Bruce.
Yeah.
Mr. Duba.
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. All righty. I think that brings us to, thank you, City Engineer Donahue. That brings us to Item seventeen, and then after seventeen, I have one small item I want to bring up with the team. Item seventeen, approval of municipal parking services and ticket processing service agreement. So this one's back. I think Chief O'Donohue's handling this one. Chief O'Donohue.
Yes, Mayor and City Commission, if, if you indulge me a little bit, I'm going to go through a quick review of how we got here right now. Several years ago, we decided to bring all things parking under the PD umbrella. Prior to that, we, there were several departments that were involved with this, different aspects of the parking system. And quite frankly, we did a poor job as a city of coordinating those efforts. As a result, Royal Oak kind of earned a negative reputation regarding parking. The perception was parking was scarce, it was expensive, and enforcement was heavy handed. A few years ago, we hired Keith Fry to come in and tasked him with reviewing the system as a whole and improve not only operational efficiencies, but address some of these public perception issues. Keith has done a great job for us and a- after doing a lot of research, he recommended this MPS system. After vetting the company, we authorized a test, a little pilot program on Main Street. And we were very pleased with the results and, and the, the way the system operated as a whole. However, what those results clearly indicated is a majority of people do not pay for parking. As explained previously, MPS has kind of a unique business model. So we, we, we first presented this idea to the DDA Parking Infrastructure Committee. We explained what, what it was, and it was just kind of an update for everyone. Everyone on the, on the meeting seemed interested and, and somewhat enthusiastic about the program. We then presented it to the City Commission. This was last fall. We, we had this, the commission had some questions and concerns and one of the things we were tasked is but we, the def- the commission seemed to want not a lot of more, they, they, we were solely focused on the street meters. And the commission wanted to know if we could bring the the surface lots and parking structures u- under that. But, but most important, we were asked to solicit feedback from the public. In January, with the help of Judy Davids, we did a very unique and I would say wildly successful virtual town hall. The participation and response was overwhelming. Those, everyone who participated seemed gen- generally enthusiastic about this. And now this was limited to Royal Oakers, so we didn't get other visitors, but it's from Royal Oakers all over town. So plenty of Royal Oakers who drive to town when they want to come visit. Judy Davids is on the call today if we have questions about that. The, the details of the public's response. So in January twenty-sixth, we presented a contract to the City Commission and quite frankly, I think we were beaten up on, on the terms. So the commission was not happy with it. They, we were sent back to, to work on the contract. MPS was at the Royal Oak Police Station that Tuesday morning. We sat down and sat down with them and we went through the contract line by line to address the concerns identified by the, by the commission and city staff. And so what we're able to do is come up with an agreement that both our internal legal department and bond counsel were able to sign off and say, yep, we're, we're okay with this with this agreement. I'm going to try to, before I get into my my actual memo, I, I just to make sure everyone's perfectly clear on what we're proposing. Carol, if we could pull up that map we referred to earlier. Carol tried to teach me how to share my screen and I failed the task, so. Okay, the, I, I think it's important for the, all the commission to understand, this is kind of the, a map of where MPS meters will be going and everywhere you see green, that, those will be MPS, the fully functional MPS meters. Where you see the black dots, those will be more, they'd be the traditional meters. They won't be part of MPS. That is an area of potential growth or expansion later on. But we just don't have good data on those meters because those are all dumb, what I'd call dumb meters. And so they don't, we don't have the ability to kind of know, we're, we're going to move our existing smart meters up there. Once we get the data that, that it is potentially an area of expansion. The only area, you know, the, the, the old P eight lot that is OCC, we obviously aren't putting MPS in there. We don't own that lot anymore. There's some work going to be done there as that lot gets converted. And then the little lot on the alley behind what was Woody's in the old place, I'm drawing a blank on it. That, they can't get their technology in there because of railroad tracks. But so that, that's where we'll have MPS. The red spots are the angled parking and those will be MPS meters, but they won't be spots that are able to automatically ticket. We, we won't know be, because they come at an angle, we're not reading the meters the same way. So we'll, we'll get notice if there's a violation there, but they won't be automatically ticketed in those, just in those spots. So if we could go back to the regular screen, thank you, Carol. So in addition to the contract issues, staff was asked to provide the commission with information on on basically how much it would cost to upgrade our current system as an alternative to MPS. I, I'm going to go through this, but it, it's important to note, like our, our current system isn't working. I've never liked the kiosks we have. So I'm not certain that I would recommend that we just upgrade our current system if the commission opts not to go with MPS. But just to have a an understanding, we'll, we'll go through this and, and of course, open any questions. So first off, we're, we're switching, we currently have a lot of IPS meters. The latest batch we bought were Civic Smart. Keith was able to find these Civic Smart meters and, and it's about, it's considerably less expensive than our IPS meters. So the, these numbers are for the less expensive Civic Smart meters. But the base cost for the meters, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, that's to buy the meters we need. However, over five years, it's going to cost us eight hundred and forty-seven eight hundred and forty-seven thousand and change. And that's due to the, the monthly fees, warranties, batteries, which are an ongoing problem, and these gateways. We also have three hundred and sixty-three surface lot spots that are managed by either meters or kiosks. If, if we opt to do those, that's additional additional five-year cost of four hundred and two, four, four hundred and two thousand dollars. Then when we get to our kiosks, the, the police, we, we'd need to buy at least three new kiosks for our current municipal parking system. And the total five-year cost of the new kiosk and the monthly fees for our existing kiosk is ninety-one thousand. So in total, it will cost the city one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars to keep the current system with the recommended upgrades. Now that is keeping parking meters that are less accessible, less user friendly, need continual maintenance and, and the rest of it. The total cost for, to the city for implementing the MPS infrastructure is about thirty thousand dollars, and that's just for bollards, signage, and some pavement striping. And although this is not a required expense, if the city opted to replace the flags that MPS does a micro cut into the flags to run their wires and then they fill it with some sort of sealant. You're not required to replace them, but if they opted to, it would cost about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars to replace those flags, whether it's the city, the DDA, or what we'd recommend is let them put them in, let's see how they look and then decide if we want to replace it. So we pay no monthly fees for MPS, but we do share a percentage of all the fees and fines collected. That's so that arrangement is really appropriately addressed on the revenue side. And so we have some revenue projections for you, and these are based off of twenty nineteen base activity since twenty twenty was, was an outlier. If we opt for status quo, which means we just get those smart meters, we anticipate, anticipate a similar compliance rate of below, well below fifty percent. As such, the fee and fine revenue As such, the fee and fine revenue is expected to remain constant with, consistent with historical averages. In over five years, we expect to yield about six. Million, eight hundred and eleven thousand and change in parking fees. And two million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand in parking fines, which are tickets. Under the MPS model, fees and fines have an inverse relationship, so the more compliance we get, the less tickets we write. And so we, we, it's hard to do the average, so we did about a seventy-five percent. Average compliance rate over five years. This memo, it should be about seven million. Ninety-five thousand and change in fees. Now that's our portion of the fees, that's after we split it with the commission or with the MPS. Fine revenue. Would be about fifteen million, nine hundred and twelve thousand. It's it's actually kind of a misleading number. The a truer number would be twelve million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand. Because there's some processing costs that come out of that, but that is our half. That that isn't then split again. So if compliance reaches ninety percent, which is. We expect compliance to to dramatically increase over time. Then our fines will drop down to just over six million. Although staff believes MPS is the best option, not only for the economic reasons stated above, but more importantly, it's for ease of use for the end user. And overall fairness for everyone. That's that's what we're going for. We want to make sure parking is convenient, accessible and functional and we think we can do that with MPS. Now, over the last couple of weeks, we've had a commissioner send us some concerns, we've tried to answer those. But recently, we had, I was given some. Feedback from some restaurant, people involved in the restaurant business and then their their concerns. I I I talked to. The the head of their Restaurant Association. I I said, if anyone's got questions, I'm always available. I reached out to to a couple of restaurants and tried to explain. How this works. And and one of the themes that kind of came up was. Well, you know, things are just getting back to normal, why do this now? And I'm sympathetic to that, but we know that. The Henry Ford Building is going to be open and that's gonna dramatically change the visitors, whether it's five hundred visitors a day or a thousand. That is gonna change and then our Central Park is going to change the visitors we have. I I think it's a mistake to say, let's wait, see how bad things get and then react to it. That that isn't how we like to operate. I, we have a little saying, everyone in the police, police department has heard it. It's, if it's predictable, it's preventable. We don't want there to be, once this opens and 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 we have these new visitors. We wanna, we wanna kind of head off the problems ahead of time. We think we're using technology in a great way. I think the app of finding an open spot is huge. You know, there's some flexibility. I I think the really the downside or the biggest negative is. You know, you're guaranteed a ticket if you don't pay the meter. We're making it easy to pay the meter and if you don't pay it, you'll get a ticket. That will happen and. With that, I don't I don't want to go over all the benefits or whatever, but we're open to explain it or clarify anything. There was another question about special events and we just had art and fire and. How much would art and fire cost next year? Any event that we've previously held, we can still hold and there's no additional cost to us. New, if we had a new event, a new special event that wanted to come to town. First thirty spots, we have flexibility to to use up to thirty spots in any way we want at no cost. Beyond thirty, it's twenty-five dollars a spot. I I would say that our experience in dealing with MPS is. There are certain things that. Just from a business sense, wouldn't make sense for MPS to take a hard line against and. In dealing with, if if we came up with something that maybe wasn't anticipated, I'm I'm comfortable, we could, we could work that out. Talked for a while, we have on the line, we have several representatives from MPS. We also have Keith and then Chris and Neta, who's helping Keith with all this, so. If there's any questions for me or the team, we're happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Chief O'Donoghue. I think you recapped everything pretty succinctly there as well as adapted to some of the more contemporary questions. Any questions? Let's kick this off for the chief and his team. Okay, Mr. Macy, we'll start.
So the revenue numbers look, they go way, way up, right? But that's the, that's the total revenue, correct? That's not, that's not the revenue that comes to us.
No, that's, that's the revenue that comes to us. The numbers I. Is what we get and yeah, I think it's important to. To note that the fee revenue goes to the parking system. The fine revenue goes to the general fund. That's just an important distinction to make.
Yeah, I I had a question about it either way, because assuming that I was assuming that it was only, it was going to be the whole amount and we were only getting half of that. But if it's only half the amount, that means the amount that people are spending to come to our downtown is like going absolutely through the roof. Right? And then instead of whatever, nine point five, it might be due to month right now, it's gonna be. Forty-four million?
Not not forty-four million, it's because you're either paying, remember, you're either paying. Or you're paying the fee, so if you pay the fine. What what we have right now is people who abuse the system and one, one complaint I got was, well. You know, my mom comes down and she doesn't like the structure, so she's able to just keep feeding the meter with with the app. Well, we we have a system that, our parking system doesn't work if people stay in one street spot all day. You can go to a parking structure and park for free. What our community engagement found is people who park in our structures love them. People who don't, you know, a lot of people have like ideas of parking structures. Our parking structures are in great shape. And they are by far the best deal going. The first two hours are free. If you think you're going to be in town for longer than two hours, you should park in a structure. If you're there for three, you you walk out paying seventy-five cents. It's not a lot. We have a two-hour limit on our streets. We, you know, that's a city commission. Decision on whether or not you'd want to raise that. I wouldn't suggest, if you Dave, you wanna say, well, we got this new system, let's give people a minimum of three before they're guaranteed a ticket. That would be something we could experiment with, but I I wouldn't go much higher than three because. You you need the parking to be available. That's the key, is we want parking to be available and convenient, so.
Okay, but I guess what I'm saying here, although I did the math one because I see it's over five years. But it's the fees that people will pay coming into the, wherever they go. For five years on the current system, nine point five million dollars total, we pay by people to for fines and fees. If we go with the MPS system, over that same five years, it'll be forty-six billion. Because we'll get twenty-three million and they'll get twenty-three billion, I think.
No, I I I don't think that, let me look at this to see. So, under the status quo. We would expect after five years to bring in six point eight million in fees. Under MPS. Assuming a seventy-five percent compliance rate, now that's kind of the tricky part. But assuming a seventy-five percent compliance rate, we'd have seven million in fees. But the people would be paying fourteen million dollars in fees. But keep in mind, that's people paying what they're supposed to pay right now. We're not getting fourteen million because most people, a majority of people don't pay for parking. So if you go down and pay for parking and I don't. That doesn't seem fair to me, or if someone says, well, I'm only in there for fifteen minutes, so why should I pay? I'm gonna risk it. Or what I'll do, we see a lot is, they don't pay, but then when they see. The the park enforcement walk down, they'll go out and argue with them or something like that, so.
I get it and I I appreciate the purity of your system, but I'm I'm combining the the fees and fines together. And so that amount is a is quite a bit different. If you can, if you combine them together and realize that the that with MPS, it's actually twice that amount because we're only getting fifty percent of it. So I hear what you're saying that like, everybody's been paying exactly what they owe because this system is gonna catch them at the moment. I get it, I get that. But we're also, it also means it's suddenly, we suddenly become that city that every time you go there, you pay ten or twenty dollars. If you do this, I get it, it's because they violated the system and I know I'm talking to the police chief here, but I'm just saying. It's a, it is a significant increase in the cost of visiting Royal Oak. If these are the, if these are in fact the numbers, so I I get what you're saying and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just putting that point out there.
Mr. Dubon.
Yeah, I I appreciate Commissioner Macy's point, but I I disagree with the characterization that it's an increase in the cost of visiting Royal Oak because. The cost is what it is now. To Chief's point, we're getting barely forty percent compliance now. So the cost, cost is not going up, it's not increased the cost, it's just whether or not people are gonna choose to obey the law. And I think one of the directions we've we've given the chief over the years is that. You don't want to be a city that's gouging people, that's just. You know, aggressively writing tickets for the sake of it, but we want a system that encourages. Ease of use and encourages compliance. And I feel like this is much more simple than a bunch of our old dumb meters that are operating on multiple systems. Some are on kiosks and some are on a smart app and some are just coin-operated, like standardizing it across the city so we can actually. Communicate about it and and then folks will know, like, it's way cheaper either parking a deck or to comply with the meter. That feels, it feels less chaotic, it feels easier and the the cost is enough, the meters are are gonna be what they're gonna be.
So ticket prices are doubling.
But compliance is going up.
And I and I would argue too that one of the things that Chief O'Donoghue touched on, which is true, I mean, we've been. Thank goodness, during all of this pandemic, I mean, one, we've been encouraging people to use the parking garage, we have two hours free parking, so people are motivated to do that. But also, you know, the amount of people that we're bringing to our downtown, this all started ten years ago when we wanted to. Reinvigorate our downtown because we saw what was happening with the retail apocalypse, with Amazon coming on board, Walmart taking over. And this small businesses struggling and we love our small businesses, our retailers, our restaurants. I fear, you know, if you wait and react, coming out of the pandemic, the popularity of downtown, everybody coming at once for different purposes, let's say with Henry Ford. They're there to get a treatment, they park, they risk the ten dollars. Well, that means those are places that aren't open for someone to pick up something during the day quickly from Rail and Anchor or from another shop. You know, Funky Seven or whatever it may be, and I think those businesses and and a lot of our our takeout business, which has been really thriving lately. And and I think that business is changing for our downtown businesses is that, you know, the pickup orders and things of that nature, DoorDash. You know, we need to have that circulation in order to keep our businesses healthy because we choose those amenities, I think now more than ever. I think back in the day when we were a little bit sleepier. You know, the 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 enforcement and risk, you know, was was a challenge. I think now we have to be more cognizant. I think people have to understand, we we built the parking. Structures, they're safe, they're desirable for a lot of people, they're cleaner, they're nicer. They're free for two hours, you know, that's where you should be parking long-term. We also had a a a big issue with employee parking and, you know, ten dollars was a was a way to risk it. The twenty-dollar fine is not unreasonable when you look at like neighbors that we have. That bring in this amount of foot traffic or car traffic into our community, so. Yes, nobody wants to to, you know, I mean. No one wants to to lay down a fine, that that's that's the bad part of business, but also we don't want people tying up every parking stall in front of every. Business and having those businesses suffer as well, so. I think, you know, people have, right, or wrongfully so, characterized us as being, you know, tough on parking. I think this, as Commissioner Dubac pointed out, we have the ability to. It's not an enforcement issue, it's opening up the ability for ease of payment and for understanding and that honestly. If you can't do it and you want to take the risk, ten or twenty dollars, that's on you. You know, there's, if you have the ability to pay, it's easy to pay and you know, and you have all the information at your hands to know exactly what you're doing. And it's also easier to park because for a lot of us that just need to pull in for ten minutes, fifteen minutes to pick up something to eat, to bring it back home to our families or whatever. That's gonna make my experience so much better as that type of person coming to town. For, you know, short trips and it's certainly gonna mean that helps our our downtown businesses as well. And so, I mean, those are things we have to balance, but but, I mean, if the argument is like going from ten to twenty, then why don't we go from ten to zero? You know what I mean? It's, you know, I think you gotta have a meaningful fine there to to not, you know, punish people. But to encourage the right behavior as a means of public policy to encourage the right flow of traffic and placement in your town for parkers. Just, just my two cents. Mr. Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I've I've spoken at great lengths about this to many people on this commission publicly, private citizens. I I will say, I'm go, I'm about to reference a lot of items that aren't publicly available right now. We didn't, we don't have the actual contract posted online, so I'm also not necessarily comfortable taking a vote on this tonight because of that. So I I think that's something that, as we're considering this right now, I'm gonna reference page numbers that just don't exist in our public documents. So, you know, that being said. I I like the system, I like the actual parking system, I like the idea of it, I like, you know. The equity in the parking, I like how easy the ease of use for some people. What I don't like about it though is continues to be the actual, some of the contract language. I feel that it remains a little bit one-sided towards MPS and rightfully so, I mean, they they are. They're making the capital investment that we're not making here. They are taking the upfront costs of installing millions of dollars worth of parking bollards inside our entire city. They're monitoring this, they're maintaining the system, the software. There's, there's a lot that goes into that, so I definitely appreciate that. But then there's some things, I'm, you know, the original contract, there's a clause that if MPS has a breach of contract, they have ninety days to cure it. But the city only has thirty, you know, that's the, that's an item that I think's just unfair. And then up to my big issue, and I I've talked to almost everyone here about this, is the twenty-five dollars per day for spot for us to bag a spot. And I do appreciate the chief has worked conservatively, I mean, he has gotten more spots for us, up to thirty spots per vent to bag in a single day. As I read the contract, and you know, Ms. Valcom, please tell me if I'm wrong, there is a provision, a minimum performance provision. That states that MPS will make two hundred and fifty dollars per month off of each meter. Per space per month and. If there's a minimum performance of two fifty per month, I don't understand why we're also charged twenty-five dollars per day to bag a meter. So I I feel like it has to be one or the other and I see chief.
I could, I could answer that. The minimum performance has to do with, i- if there's a meter. And it's not making two hundred and fifty per month, they can remove it. If we opted to say, yeah, we really want a meter here, even though it's not generating two hundred and fifty dollars per month. But we really want a meter there for some reason. We could then make up the difference, that's if we insisted on there being a meter where nobody parks. We have a problem now where we're not sure what the usage is in some lots and some areas because we have dumb meters. We don't know who's actually parking there. So I I guess I don't foresee a scenario where. We would demand to have a meter where nobody's parking. Also, the MPS has a financial interest in people. Using their system, so I don't see them just arbitrarily going through the expense of removing a meter. That's underperforming, but perhaps kind of right on the edge of their meter. That becomes an open spot. Obviously, that would be a spot where people would park. Obviously, that that would be a spot where people would park, it could could duck, could fill out all day, so. But we are, we are not obligated to ensure every meter makes money for that, that that's not our obligation. Um, that's, no, not what we're, not what they're asking from us.
I I I appreciate it, Chief, and then, so I got, you know, the the next paragraph talks about twenty percent reduction and it's a material breach, if. The safety six do not, if they go below the required two fifty minimum threshold, so. I guess that's, you know, I I think it's more of a lawyer question too, I mean, is that, you know, I I'm not a lawyer, but to me, that that's that's what that looks like.
Anne, are you on the line? Do you wanna ref- address that?
Yeah, I am, and I'm, I'm trying to find the agreement itself because it wasn't um attached to the agenda, so.
Am I, am I seeing it? Maybe I'm looking at one that on my agenda. I see all the exhibits, I see the red lines, this is all online on the Agenda Center.
I I I think, uh, Mayor, I think that there's two, there's a. The actual parking service agreement, I I just clicked on it, was not there, so.
Okay, mine says ticket processing services agreement.
Yeah, that that's one aspect of the agreement, and I think it was on page fourteen, if I'm not mistaken.
It was fourteen or fifteen, you're correct, Chief, and the document on mine goes to Chief.
Okay. Yeah.
There are two separate agreements, um, there's the parking services agreement and the ticket processing agreement. So, um, Commissioner Cola, you were referring to, I found the um, the clean copy of the agreement.
It's Exhibit C. Under minimum performance and Exhibit C N.
Okay, what page is it on? Oh, I see it.
I guess I don't, I don't, Commissioner, I don't see where it says material breach in this, so I'm.
It's under the um paragraph that begins with twenty percent or more revenue drop. So notwithstanding anything contained in this agreement to the contrary. In in other words, what that means is if the city were to materially change the. Spaces or the. Operations in such a way that the two hundred and fifty dollar minimum were. Not reached by twenty percent or more on a ninety day rolling basis, in other words, if the city took some affirmative action to change that. Um, that that would constitute a material breach, and obviously because of the. Um, as you noted, Commissioner Cola, the. Necessity that uh MPS be able to recoup its uh capital investment in this uh arrangement. Um, but that just means that the city must have taken some type of affirmative. Uh, action to reduce the um, the two hundred and fifty dollar minimum threshold and not make up the shortfall. And that is where. That's when it becomes a material breach. But I don't believe that that's per for in a, uh, this is per space per month. Um, so it's not for an individual space, it's. Um, system wide, because then it would affect the the gross revenues system wide.
But Anne, maybe to clarify, because we, we had this discussion internally and. If for some reason we had another terrible event where no one came downtown. Royal Oak is not financially. Responsible for anything.
Correct, and that that's not an affirmative action by the city, this is, this is talking about. Where the city does something to jeopardize the revenues and it continues for more than a ninety, for more than ninety days.
So, we're not on, we're not on the. We're not on the hook or or have any like li- potential liability in that aspect and.
In this particular case, it would be like if the city said, we're gonna offer one penny parking for all year. And then, you know. Hardly any revenue and that goes against the spirit or understanding of both parties as far as having, you know, rates that are similar to what we have.
Correct.
So doing a bait and switch, protecting against bait and switch on the city's part. Because it is possible you could have a new elected board here in two years, and that board could do something.
Okay, well, wh- while they look at that, I still, I just remain against the twenty five dollars per day, that that's my last taken point. So, thank you all.
Um, I would like to point out that that twenty five dollars per day does not include the special events that have been historically part of the city's. Cities parking uh accommodation because the historical numbers for two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Were the basis for the financial considerations that went into this agreement. And um, those special events like Arts Beat and Eats um and other festivals that have ordinarily been held. Um, that, those are accounted for, so um, new events really are are really what we're talking about where that. Uh, reduction in available spaces would be um affected.
Ma- Mayor, if I could, um, I I it's important to note, we currently charge fifteen dollars per day. Per spot because that's the revenue we would have generated from that meter, so. Um, maybe to Commissioner Macy's point, if someone were to improperly sit at a meter all day. And fill it, they would have paid fifteen dollars, if they got a ticket, they'd pay ten currently. So it's only, it's going up ten dollars per spot.
I saw Commissioner Hunt before Commissioner Macy, I know you've had a chance to chime in already, but I did mark down Commissioner Hunt had some, some comments.
Yes, and first I wanna thank you, Chief O'Donoghue, for going back, talking to MPS and um, taking our concerns that we previously discussed back to them. Uh, but my concerns really echo what Commissioner Colo stated, I I don't have issues with the system or the fines and fees that are being paid. Uh, my concern is with the control that MPS seems to have over the city in implementing some of these things. Uh, particularly, I noticed in the parking services agreement that it limits the control that judicial, the courts would have in waiving fees. Uh, reducing fees, um, and it will cause the city to have to true up in the event they reduce fees below, you know, the twenty dollar ticket. Uh, was there any discussion with MPS? I mean, I understand MPS is a business, they're in it to make money. But is there, was there any discussion with, you know, releasing some of that control back to the city? So that we can do things like have new um, new events without having to have that increase per space charge. And um judicial costs.
Well, I I would say that. We, the, the court can still do what the court wants to do, the judge can do whatever they wanna do.
Example, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm, yeah, but I, uh, I don't know, this is specific section you're talking about, maybe Anne or even MPS could address it, but. Um, the, uh, you know. Without the threat of a ticket, you're not driving the compliance on the fees, and that's really the model, so you kind of gotta have both, I would say. Uh, as far as new special events, keep in mind, the first thirty spots, we get at no cost. And that really, thirty spots is a lot, especially if you wanna shut a street down, that's a lot. If we go with forty, then we're paying that twenty five on just those ten spots. But whenever we have someone come into town to do something, uh. Yeah, I, we make them pay for the parking they're using up, so. You know, that, that that's there, I I would think if there was an event that. Um, I, you know, like, uh, during a holiday weekend or something, something new. And we could demonstrate that, you know what, yeah, we're gonna take up these spots, but we're actually gonna bring more people down this weekend than normally would bring. I'm comfortable, we could talk to MPS and say, this is what, this is the plan, this is what we're thinking, it's. Because they have the surface lots also. You know, it's gonna, it's have been either a a break even or a net gain for you. It is in MPS's best interest that people come to Royal Oak and visit Royal Oak and have a good experience and come back, so. Um, but that is not in the contract that way, so.
And um, Commissioner Hunt, one of the issues that we had to address with the city's bond council because the. Um, the parking system as a whole also produces revenue and is accounted for in the covenants. Of the bonds that were used, that were issued to pay for the two parking structures. We had a lot of conversations about the issue of control. And we changed a lot of the language in the. Uh, in the agreement, specifically in Exhibit C, to make it clear that the city retains control over the system. Um, the two hundred and fifty dollars that Commissioner Colo mentioned with respect to. Uh, the the ninety day rolling average basis, that allows, that simply allows MPS to move. Um, a a meter or a stick, parking stick. Um, to a more productive location versus keeping, you know, an unproductive or um. You know, a space that's not really producing much revenue. Um, it's not, that in and of itself is not really a penalty to the point regarding um tying the hands of the courts. We can't tie the hands of the courts, we have no power, number one, to do that, but number two. Also, um, there have been discussions with the judges about the requirements to. Um, raise the uh fines from ten to twenty dollars. Uh, on parking tickets and they, and of course, this agreement doesn't take effect unless that happens. And the court has indicated some willingness to um, to do so, as far as I understand, I was not part of that specific discussion, but that is my understanding.
Um, ju- just to, to be clear. They can remove a meter, we're under no obligation to give them a more productive spot. So that that would be something would work out with them if it was in everyone's best interest to do that, but. Um, they can remove an underperforming meter. If they prove it's underperforming, pretty much at their discretion, but as far as moving it, they need our permission to do that aspect of it.
And if it's an underperforming meter, we can still install one of our own traditional meters, just to.
Yeah, absolutely.
As a enforcement measure, let's say. The point is, you don't wanna have, I mean, I would even think MPS, if their model is based on fees, they wouldn't want to have. I mean, in fact, they'd wanna have every meter covered, uh, because you don't wanna encourage people to, you know, park in spots that aren't charged for. So, you know, I think it's a natural remedy, so to speak, based on the interest of the, of the service provider. Commissioner Macy. Chris- Commissioner Macy, I don't know that we can hear you.
I was saying some really smart things, but now I'm gonna say the rest. Um, so I just feel like overall that the residents aren't gonna feel like this is an improvement to the parking system. Um, and I see, I can see from the city's point of view, if the revenue was going to increase so much, there's a motivation for it to do that, and then we could perhaps put that money back into the system. Although I I remain confused about the numbers because I thought when it was initially sold to us, it was said we're at fifty percent compliance. And then they're going to double that essentially to a hundred percent compliance, but if they did. And then they still got half of the fees, so I'm confused by the numbers because it seems to me like it would sort of even out for us in terms of what we're receiving. And then a lot of money that we'd be collecting from our residents and from visitors to our downtown would be going to this private company. Um, which, you know, again, they're putting an investment in, and the revenue part would make sense to me, again, if it were something that we were struggling with, that we needed support on. But we actually have a quite healthy parking fund, so keeping control to ourselves when we're able to do so. It seems like it makes sense to me, and it just feels to me that. Right now, people, when they're downtown, if they're at a restaurant and they stay past, and they stay past two hours, which is not allowed. They can still, however, go into the app and they can restart a parking thing, I know it's not what's supposed to be done, but you can do it. And I don't think people are going to see it as an improvement, that if they're waiting for their check and it becomes two mi- two hours and seven minutes. They suddenly get a ticket, they, or they have to run from their restaurant to the parking spot because they have to move, they literally have to move the car. They can't be compliant by paying at that moment, so it it just. I'm I'm worried that this is not an improvement, and I'm not seeing the problem that it's solving, like, I understand that there's an e- equity issue here, like, it's not fair that people aren't paying for every minute of their parking. Um, but if is, is it really a, are we having that as a significant problem in Royal Oak? It I, it doesn't feel to me that we are, and we have these parking structures. I understand we wanna drive usage to that, I think we've done a fairly good job of that, the parking structures that seem to be getting good use. And if the revenue that's coming in is sufficient for us to do this ourselves. Tying our hands in several different ways for five years seems, seems like a lot to me. So I I just have trouble seeing how this is a a benefit to us in a way that's other than financial. And I'm afraid it's going to be such a detriment to our residents and to the visitors to our downtown. That it's gonna make it seem like, why would you go to downtown Royal Oak if you can't spend, you either have to park in the structure or you're in big trouble. And if revenue were an issue, we could double the tickets, we could double the ticket price and keep the money, like, that could just come to us instead of being split with them, so. I, I I mean, I see that there's some cool functionality of this, that I'm, I'm. I've seen, I've seen how, seen, I've seen some information about how it's played out in other cities. Uh, and I'm afraid we're being guinea pigs for something that may not work out too well.
So Commissioner Macy, I'm gonna ask that um, Mr. Brake and Chief O'Donoghue can can speak to that, but I also wanna remind you. I I appreciate your hypothesis, and I think this is the same hypothesis that Chief and Mr. Brake and Ms. David's had. And they tested it among all of our residents, as far as, is this something that you think would work? And that you would would like, and and and, you know, and I think we have that answer as far as, um, you know. When we did all the public outreach as far as a change in the system. And certainly from a financial point of view, I mean, the parking system, there's, there's no tangible benefit. Um, other than to improve parking, I'll just, you know, we're, I'll just add and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief O'Donoghue or Mr. Brake. You know, we 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 can't do what um, a third party can do in this regard because we'd have to go out and hire ten people to do it. We'd have to be experts in how to manage and maintain these smart meters, we'd have to be experts in the software and troubleshooting. We'd have to be experts in all the sort of functionality, we'd have to hire additional managers, and it's not just the hiring of the people that adds to the cost. Um, I think that there's an innate, like, is this something that if somebody else can do it better privately? Um, under our authority and jurisdiction, um, does it make sense to, you know, take advantage of those economies of scale, et cetera? Uh, to to provide it for a better price, so, you know, I I think that the, it it is a logical idea that, okay, well, we might be able to do it ourselves. But I don't think we've been able to even change our gov dot pay thing very well. You know, when it comes to even paying for fees and fines, um, and it, that's not a knock against our staff or the courts. I just, my confidence is a little low in 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 making meaningful change like this, but I'll, I'll, I just wanted to get that out. And uh, I'll leave it to Mr. Brake and and Chief O'Donoghue to follow up.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor, and I I'm gonna come right out, and from an overall perspective, I'm recommending to you tonight that you approve this contract. And here's the reason why. What, what they are offering us is a smart city solution. What do I mean by that? It's easy to pay and it's easy to park. The advantage here is that this app will provide assistance, if you need to find a parking spot, it'll find it for you. It'll also provide that that turnover, as you discussed before, where someone is not dominating a parking spot. That's the problem that we're heading toward, and why should we wait for that problem to occur? The the technology that they're utilizing, if any of you travel on any of the toll roads and and many states use. And you notice that the toll roads are moving away from toll booths, they're using license plate readers. They're recognizing that's a new technology, and that's what the MPS system uses here. It's a fair and consistent practice, and as the mayor mentioned, and other examples, there's instances where people are not paying. So, uh, I I would argue that in the opposite direction, there are conveniences. So I, I would argue that in the opposite direction, there are conveniences that people will see, and we're going to have a greater occurrence of a greater number of people visiting the downtown area. And we can't, wh- what will drive people away is that they can't find a place to park. Under this system, this, this turns those parking spaces over. And so it frees up that if someone wants to do the on-street parking as close to a particular business and not have to worry about during, here, here's complaints that I've heard here and where I worked previously, is where someone's at a birthday celebration and someone's having to look at their watch because they have to race back to the meter and, and feed more into that system. Under this arrangement, they don't have to worry about that. Um, so i- if nothing else, take this into consideration. Easy to pay, easy to park. That, that should be bottom line, what the consideration should be. And with, with regard to, and, and we apologize that this does not include the, the additional attachments. I would say that, here's my recommendation, that you approve the, the contract subject to the review of our new city attorney to make sure that these attachments do not have any material change uh, to what was discussed or intended. Um, so we've had this item, this has been on the agenda for the last eight months. We began this discussion back in October, uh, and we've had this appear in March and April and now in June. We're, we're ready to, to move forward on this. Um, but we need to tidy up some of these details, and we can do that. Um, and Mr. Leo can uh, help us out with those uh, uh, details. But uh, a- again, take that in consideration. This is a smart city solution.
Dave?
Uh, just, just to point out, thi- this, this is a big improvement in the, the, other than finding your spot, you can preload it, so when you pull up and park, it automatically deducts the exact minute you were there, not a penny more, not a minute less, whatever. And to me, that's, for the frequent visitors, that's what the kids are gonna use. They're gonna preload it, they pull in, they don't have to do anything. They don't have to touch a screen, they don't have to do it, it automatically, and then it charges them for just, just the time they were there. Um, our meters are problematic, particularly if you're, uh, not the right height, th- they're, they're a problem. Our, our parking fund, although it might be in good shape, we're looking at a substantial capital expense to resolve today's problem that has to get resolved. So, uh, I, I think we, we, we reviewed them, but I think the system itself is an improvement. There are plenty of other vendors who will sell us something that they promise will work, and it may or may not work, but once we buy it, w- we own it. The, the thing I like about this is MPS has skin in the game. They have to make sure their system works, or they don't get paid either. So, um, and, and I would point out also that we pulled Keith out of retirement to come to our parking stuff. Last fall, he said he was gonna retire officially, and we're not letting him leave until he gets this thing out across the finish line, so.
Yeah, and, and, and I think I'll just add to my two cents, because I, you know, in the industry that I operate in privately, we do, we look at parking quite a bit. Um, one of the things, if you do research, and this isn't private knowledge, this is something that you can find, a lot of studies have been done. Um, a lot, folks have anxiety with parking. And even when they go into a parking garage or a parking lot, just the, the thought of like, okay, every system is unique and different, and I have to pull a ticket, just the fact that they're holding on to a ticket, you know, just gives people like, oh, I might lose it, you know, it's a process, it's stressful, I gotta pay, what if I lose my wallet, I can't put my card in, so. What's interesting about these camera read systems on the license plates, in fact, for our regular users and people coming into town and getting takeout or coming in for an hour or two, having a beer and a burger, whatever it may be, um, the uh, idea that, you know, you're covered. You don't have to worry about if your credit card's working. You don't have to worry about how much change you got in your cup holder, or how sticky that change is, because you spilled your root beer on it, whatever it may be. Um, and you can pull in, pull out, and that gives, I think, Royal Oak a unique advantage for the fact that these folks that visit on a regular basis uh, will be more encouraged to take, they're deciding between coming to us or somebody else, or going out or staying home. They're more likely, you know, i- i- it will help. Um, when you take away that anxiety and make it so much easier for them to pay, uh, especially with the license plate recognition, especially for short trips, it will make it a, our downtown, I think, actually a preference in a lot of people's mind. Um, so I think that's something to consider. Um, look, nothing is perfect, uh, nothing is free, there's no free lunches. Um, but you gotta evaluate the pros versus um, the costs, and I, and I think here, um, you know, to me, we've, we've had a lot of complaints over the years about parking in Royal Oak. Well, I feel like we've addressed, taken away almost every single um, excuse or issue people have had with a system like this. However, fines will never go away, whether it's $10 or $20, you know, people get a ticket, they're mad. They're typically mad at themselves, but they take it out on the municipality. Um, just because that's the easy thing to do. But I'll just add that two cents. I do see, so, so the commission, um, I see that there's hands up with, with Mr. Cadwell, Mr. Matthews here. I don't know, um, how the commission feels, uh, d- does anyone object if I let them have a couple minutes here um, to maybe help further answer some of the questions? Are there any objections? Okay, I don't see any objections from my colleagues. Mr. Cadwell, since you have your hand up, I'll let you have a few words uh, here, since uh, my fellow commissioners uh, don't object.
Hi, guys. Thank you for uh, taking some time for me uh, tonight. I appreciate it. A couple of things I just want to talk about, we've been talking parking, 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 which is great. But there's a lot of stuff that this system does that you, you just don't have now, and no one in the world offers it. And a couple, like, public safety type features. Uh, one, you can dial 911 from any of our systems. You can just walk up to it, hit 911, and bring the police right to wherever you're at. Two, they've got big screens on them, so if there's a tornado coming or a, you've got a, you've got something bad happening, you wanna say, you know what, the tornado's right over here and you're standing right over there, you might wanna run to over here. You can do public safety uh, type messaging. Um, just, just this last weekend in Nashville, we had a car get stolen, and 15 minutes later, they pulled into another spot to steal another car, and we immediately called the police. As, as soon as we, we knew that car was stolen, we were looking for it, and uh, those three people were apprehended. So there's, there's so many more things that this does, plus it's more fair than what you're currently doing. What you currently do, and how all cities pretty much do it, is there's no grace period. If I, you know, ran into Starbucks and uh, grabbed a latte and I was in there for 15 minutes and the, the traffic officer came out just as soon as I left and didn't pay, there's no grace period. I immediately get a ticket. There's no coming back late, there's nothing like that. If I bought a half-hour parking and I came back, uh, you know, 35 minutes later to one of your spots and I'm five minutes late, if you guys were walking by, you've already given me a ticket. That's just absolutely not fair. And that's how you currently do it. And any other system, well, that's the same way you'll do it. So this allows you this grace period. I mean, you literally can pull into one of these spots and not pay it at all. Don't pay it. And as long as you pay before you leave, you'll never get a ticket. So this is so much a more fair way of doing things than any other system in the world. If you're, we were just nominated by IDC um, as having the smartest technology in the world when it came to parking. And, and it wasn't because we wrote tickets, it's because we had all these friendly features for users. Like, for example, if I pulled up in front of a restaurant, there can be a coupon right there for that restaurant. I can grab a QR code and go get a dollar off a cheeseburger. I mean, um, if I, well, if I came into a store and I bought $500 worth of shoes, the guy can say, hey, can I comp your parking for you, because you're such a great client, and they can give me a code and the parking now is free for me. And uh, charge their account. You know, there's so many flexibilities and things that you can do with it. And, um, uh, Congress, Congress, I almost called you Congressman, sorry. Maybe you're running for Congress one day, Mr. Colo, but uh, uh, you're right, we do, we do take all the risk. And I will tell you, it's just kind of like your bond that you have now. You guys can't do anything on your current bond. You, you have certain things, you have to guarantee them certain revenue things. You guys currently, you know, can't turn around one day and just have free parking for the next 12 months, and uh, currently, without me, you can't do that when you're, under your current bond agreements. But you're right, I am taking all the risk, and I, I do have banks where I have to go get this money from, too. And one thing that I got pushed back internally is that I guaranteed you your 2019 revenue. Not your 2020, your 19, before COVID, which, we don't know what's gonna happen with COVID. We don't know if there's a a big strand coming back out this fall. We, I'm taking a huge risk. Uh, not only am I paying for everything, but I'm also stepping up and going, okay, I believe that COVID's going away here. I believe we're going back to normal. I'm willing to take the risk uh, to guarantee your 2019 revenue. Um, so anyway, that's all the stuff I want to say. There's, I'm happy to answer any questions uh, that you might have for me. Uh, I'm the guy who started this whole thing a few years ago and came up with the idea, and so I kind of know a lot about it, if you have questions about it. Thank you.
Any, any questions for Mr. Colwell? Mr. Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, sir, thank you for joining us tonight. I know there's been a lot of discussion about your system. You know, you, you did bring up one point that I, I think we've kind of sailed past tonight. Uh, there is, um, I think we have 10, 10% of the advertising at, 10% of the time, we can use the meters for civic advertisement, which would be great. Promote a mar- event, the farmer's market, promote uh, upcoming events downtown, openings of parks, which is great. What happens to other 90% of the time? You just mentioned like this restaurant QR coupon.
Yeah, so we, so we can sell ads and we, we share in the ad revenue with you. Like, we could, we could sell an ad to, you know, American Express, for example, right? And, and things like that. Or, but you can trump all the ads if there's a public safety issue. If there's a tornado company, there's an amber alert. You guys literally have the right to override everything that's on that system and put that amber alert on that screen, put that tornado on that screen, put whatever you gotta put on that screen, you guys have the right to trump everything if there's a public safety issue.
Okay, but the rest of the time, it's, it's an advertisement screen.
Yeah, which we share it, yeah.
That's my question at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I had a question, not for them, uh, but, but for, for our own staff. Um, uh, going back to the, the contract, and again, I don't have, I don't, can't remember what section it was, but there was an element in the contract that said that um, we will not disparage MPS, and I wondered if that was addressed, uh, Chief or Ms. McLaughlin?
Y- yes, it was addressed. Oh, sorry, Anna interrupted.
No, go ahead, Corey.
It was, it was kind of funny. On Tuesday morning, Joe was at the meeting, and he's like, I didn't even know that was in the contract. Take that out of there. So that was just pulled out.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? And also say, you know, this is one of the things that, you know, it's different, it's new. Um, however, it's, uh, you know, been in place in other communities, so we have some degree of confidence that it's going to be executed. Um, you know, Royal Oak is, is a leader. You know, we, we do things, uh, you know, we try to be cutting edge, we, both in terms of our you know, progressive approach to how we manage the city, maybe our environmental sustainability, and, and certainly with parking is something that you know, we've pretty much done the same old thing, which is kind of, you know, the antithesis of everything else we do, that's really exciting and new and technical. So, um, yes, there's always a comfort level that we have to become accustomed to. Uh, but at the end of the day, we're gonna still have street parking. We're gonna still have meters where people can pay. We'll still have enforcement, and, um, you know, we'll have some some additional benefits that come with this style of metering, and we won't have the upfront capital outlay. So, you know, materially speaking, um, you know, it's not as if we're getting rid of our parking or, you know, doing something, it's just how we, how we do it, and the tools we use. At least in this proposal are, are different. And I believe advantageous to the public at large, to parkers, and to our residents, but you know, that's my opinion. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion to um, do what Mr. Brake has asked for and approve this agreement. And then, if there's a second, I'll speak to my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Prush. Okay, Commissioner Douglas.
So, as Mr. Brake pointed out, we've been talking about this since last October. Staff came to us with a preliminary idea, and we, as a commission, said, yes, continue to explore this. Um, and they've done that, and they've done this in good faith, and we have, we have, you know, you know, pinned them to the wall on details. We have scrutinized this agreement, they have scrutinized the agreement. Um, they did some extraordinary community engagement that's going to be a model for other issues that we face in the community, and they did so very successfully and with very positive results. The mayor's right, we are a city that's known for innovation. Um, and there are risks here. We are kind of stepping off a, a cliff into the unknown a bit, but I think the staff, the chief, um, Mr. Brake, the Ms. McLaughlin have, have, you know, dotted the i's and crossed the t's. They've done the hard work to make sure, to protect us as well as they can. Um, and I think that the system that we are bringing forward will have the appeal that we've heard described here um, in terms of being user-friendly. It will require a substantial public information campaign, without a doubt, and I think our, our staff are up to that. Um, they did the community engagement, so they know how to speak the language to tell people how they will benefit from this system. Um, and I'm willing to, I'm, I'm willing to go for it.
Uh, Commissioner Dubon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I think in the question of, of cost and fees, we're kind of losing sight of the increased value and user experience of this system. And what we've been talking about for years is not wanting to be a city that's known as like creditorially ticketing people, but that you can come and visit and get in and out easily, and it's convenient, and it's easy to understand, and you don't feel like, um, you know, we're trying to get you. So we have a, a much more friendly and clear user interface, um, you know, just for paying, right? And, and being at your meter, but on top of the other things that I think Mr. Brake really eloquently explained about, you know, helping people navigate our downtown and find parking near where you're going. I mean, that's an incredible benefit. And yeah, there's a cost to providing that kind of connectivity, which is why the dollars, you know, that are going to be spent into the system are going up, but not to our benefit as much as to prob- provide a better experience. So I'm fine with that. I do have one question though about the advertising. That's just, is, so is that just visual on the screens, or is that like audio video? Is that just like logos on screen or ads and things? Do we have clarity on that?
Uh, it, it can, it has the ability to do both if you want it to. I mean, you can literally watch Netflix movies and play Angry Birds if you wanted to. It, I mean, it's an app, right? But uh, m- most of the stuff that, up to this point, has all been still, still shots, you know what I mean? But it could do video, like if you had a product demo you wanted to see, or uh, there is definitely a video on the screen now, when you hit the help button, a little person comes up and shows you a movie on how to use everything. So it does support video if you want it to. Does that help that question?
Yes, so we're just talking about in-app.
No, on, on the screen, the, the big screen on the, on the system, on the street.
So that's actually, and that's what I'm trying to get, the street system, I just want to know if it's generating noise or not.
No, it, it doesn't have to, no, no. I mean, you, i- if you had like an alarm, like a tornado alarm, you could, you could make a siren and stuff like that if you wanted to do that, but no, it's, it's not doing that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I see tremendous, I see tremendous benefit. This is exactly what we're asking for now, because it's a radical shift from the status quo, you know, there's a million reasons to push back on it, but this is next generation. This is, this is where we should be going. I see tremendous benefit for our businesses and our residents and our visitors, so I'm, I'm willing to move forward.
Commissioner Macy?
So I, I can count really good, and I, I can see where this is going. So I'm just gonna say that I hope, I hope that's right. I hope the Commissioner Dubon's right, because there are cool things about the system that it could be a benefit to the residents, and I hope that people find that to outweigh what I perceive to be the problems and inconveniences with the system. One of which, by the way, is those screens. Now that I know they can play ads, I'm shocked that Commissioner Douglas is going to let us put hundreds of little LED screens with ads all over our city. So, you know, I thought, I'm, I, I don't love that either, I don't love the, the number of cameras we suddenly have here. I get that it does provide some public safety benefits perhaps, but it also, um, there's, there's a loss of privacy that we can't deny. So, you know, I still see this as the glass half empty, but um, I'm, I'm willing to cross my fingers that it, that, the, that there, the people who see it as half full are correct.
Uh, Commissioner Perush?
Uh, two things. First of all, um, I think what Commissioner Douglas mentioned about a public relations campaign or a public information campaign, um, is very, very, very important. I mean, this is going to be new technology, and it's going to be state-of-the-art, and it's not going to be anything that people have seen anywhere else close to us. Um, and they're going to like it when they get used to it, but it's going to take some public education, and that's, that's going to be a huge effort. Uh, the second thing is that I think in the scope of this whole discussion, uh, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that the, the, the opening of the Henry Ford and eventually the opening of the park, of the Central Park, is going to be a, a game changer in the downtown. I mean, up until now, we've been dealing with businesses and changing businesses and retail and service industries, but it's just been this little downtown footprint of, of existing businesses. And all of a sudden, you have these two elephants walking into the room, you've got the Henry Ford, which is going to be wonderful, and you've got the Central Park, which is going to be fantastic. But they are going to change the way people use the parking system. And we're going to need new technology and a new system to be able to handle that, I'm convinced. And we don't have the manpower or person power for it, we don't have the, we don't have the the financial, financial capabilities to do that, we don't have the technological capabilities to do that. Uh, this is the situation that I think cries out for a private vendor who does this um, for a living. Um, and so I think that the way the whole parking situation is going to change radically over the next year, because of these two new things that are going to be opening up, it pretty much requires us to go in this direction. I think we would be having a huge, huge mess on our hands of, in terms of revenue, in terms of people's frustration. Um, if we didn't do something like this, which is one of the reasons we started talking about it last October. So, um, yeah, it's not going to be perfect, as the mayor says, and there are going to be little bumps in the road. And we have to do an incredible public relations campaign, a public information campaign, um, to make sure that people are comfortable with it. Um, but I, I think at, at this point in time, I think that this is the way we have to go.
Mr. Colo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think my vote's pretty clear tonight, but I, I guess, I, I thought there'd be some good ideas to pay, I appreciate Mr. Break's statements, but I think that this uh, this contract's not been before the public, you know, that's, that, I think it comes down to that. In fact, uh, three weeks ago, uh, May 23rd, we all got an email from someone concerned about data privacy, someone who dug into and read this contract, and was concerned about data privacy. The public does read this, and I, I don't think it's fair if we're voting on a five-year, $20 million contract, potentially $20 million. It's, it's a, it's a great uh, money, but um, so I, I'm going to continue to uh, vote no tonight. Thank you.
Any else? All right, well, we have a motion on the table, notwithstanding any other um, discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. Start with Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
No.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
No.
Commissioner Hunt?
No.
Commissioner Dubon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is uh, four to three in favor of the motion, so the motion passes. Um, okay, all right, well, I'd like to thank uh, Mr. Fry, um, Lieutenant Neta and Chief O'Donoghue for um, you know, their work over the last number of months and their outreach. I appreciate those uh, three votes that, you know, aren't comfortable, but, you know, I think that's also, you know, gives um, I think some implied direction to both city staff and the vendor to, you know, make sure this is executed the best of the ability to build the confidence of all seven, so I'm hopeful that um, you know, we'll see some progress here. And um, yeah, so, okay, thank you, Mr. Caldwell, for uh, for answering the questions. And uh, we'll move on to, well, which isn't the, this was the last item on tonight's agenda, but the very last thing I wanted to mention uh, before we entertain a motion to, to close is um, we didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting, uh, but I'd like to, to welcome our new city attorney, Mr. Aaron Laal. And he's joining us here for the first time uh, tonight. And um, you know, certainly taking down notes, writing, learning, I know Ms. McLaughlin has done an amazing job here helping us out in the interim while we uh, are getting Mr. uh, Laal on board. And um, just wanted to recognize him and give an opportunity uh, uh, to say hi. And, and Mr. Laal, maybe, maybe if you want to say just a couple of words, uh, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission, and the citizens of this, of Royal Oak. It's, it's an honor and, and to be here as your city attorney, and I'm very excited in, in uh, working for this organization and to try to better the community. I've only been impressed with the way this commission and this community is very forward-thinking and very progressive, and, and is seeking to more or less uh, new ways to help better the lives of this, of this community. So uh, with that, I am excited to be a part of this team, and, and I thank the mayor and the commission for hiring me and giving this, giving me this opportunity to represent the city of Royal Oak. Thank you.
Thank you, we're excited to have you onboard. All right, well, and I will, will uh, get moving here with the last part of our agenda, which is a motion. But if anyone wants to make it, notwithstanding anything better for our community, uh, if there's a motion to adjourn, we'll certainly entertain it. Wow, okay, Commissioner Dubon? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Dubon to adjourn, is there a second, second by Commissioner Douglas? All right, any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Colo, any, any discussion? None?
Mr. Mayor, I think I've said all I need to say for the night.
You can say that, oh, wait, no.
All right, well, I'll call for the vote, and I'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubon?
Yes.
And I vote yes, we are adjourned. I want to give a, a big thanks to staff for all their preparations tonight. Thank you to all the people who called in to public comment. Um, we appreciate everyone's patience tonight, and uh, everyone be safe, stay strong, and we'll see you again at the next commission meeting. Take care, good night, everyone.